What?
I'm reading your email and then not doing it again. You should come back to that later.
I can't.
Reading your email and then not doing it because you're going to come back to it later.
No.
Never done that.
Okay, do you read it?
It is 9:00 a.m. It is 9:00 a.m. I will call the meeting of the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners to order. We will be abiding by the Open Meetings Act as amended, a copy of which is at the entrance to this room. At 9:15, we will adjourn or we will recess as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners and convene as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization, also abiding by the Open Meetings Act as amended. First order of business is to open with prayer. Commissioner Hugley, would you please lead us?
Thank you for joining me. Dear my Father, we just thank you today for the many blessings we have, not only around this table but in this room and in this beautiful country that we all call home. I would ask that you give just a little bit of your wisdom to our deliberations today and watch over us in our decisions. I would ask, Father, that you be with those less fortunate than ourselves, both locally and around the world. Especially ask, Father, to be with those that put themselves in harm's way to protect these many freedoms that we enjoy. I pray these things in your holy name on that.
Amen.
Next order of business is to approve the minutes regarding Lincoln County Board of Commissioners meetings held on February 21, 2023.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the minutes regarding our commissioners' meeting that was held February 21, 2023 with one correction. The minutes are correct for what was discussed, but there is a correction that I need to make, a point of clarification for the public to know, regarding our discussion on the inland port authority and working toward appointing that board. A lot of information that I've had to digest over the past couple of years. And a mistake was made. It is the appointments will be revolving four-year terms, not three-year terms. And I just want to make sure that that is clarified for the public.
Okay, thank you.
Even though it was, the minutes do correctly reflect what was discussed in our meeting. That is a point of clarification that does need to be made.
We have a motion? Second. And we have a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Brens?
Aye.
Weems?
Aye.
Hugley?
Aye.
Wular?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
I'm staying.
Next order of business is to consider the following. First, claims and treasures receipts.
Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve the claims and treasure receipts as presented.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Hugley?
Aye.
Wular?
Aye.
Weems?
Aye.
Brens?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye. Next order of business is authorizing the chairman's signature on the Lincoln County Victim Witness Unit fiscal year 2024 application, certification, and assurances. I am not sure what this involves for sure, Becky or Tyler. Do you have some clarification on this?
I guess I thought somebody would be here this morning. I believe you have, I'll have you go ahead and sign this, but initially you should. This is the new application going forward. But I think you have to e-sign it, if I'm not mistaken. So.
Okay.
I'll have you sign the paper copy, but this is their actual application moving forward. They have to do it through Amplifun now, so I'm sure you'll have to digitally sign it.
Is this for a particular grant and or is this just for the application process?
This is for the application process for the 2024 victim access grant.
Okay.
And they are working with a grant writer now apparently to do the grant itself.
Yeah.
So.
Colleagues, your preference?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that you sign the Lincoln County Victims Witness Unit for year 2024 application, certification, and assurances.
We have a motion? And a second. Any other discussion?
I was able to attend a ceremony that this group held out on the lawn last summer. And to hear the testimony from the people that they serve and how much they appreciate the work that this unit does and the local law enforcement and the county attorney's office, it was very touching. And so this is a great group that does a lot of good work in our community.
Okay, sounds great. We have a motion and a second. Correct. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Wular?
Aye.
Hugley?
Go ahead.
Weems?
Aye.
Brens?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Why don't you go ahead and I guess physically do it, then I'll get a hold of, find out for sure if we've got it. I'm assuming we're going to have to e-sign something.
Do you have the original?
Yeah, I just printed them off.
My initials on first.
Your initials on the front page. And then I think you just need to, there's initial and then signature on the back page. I don't really think it's in the attachment, but we'll see. Oh, there is one on page four, too. Sorry.
Okay. Okay, next order of business is to receive an order filed, the fee reports submitted by the county sheriff.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the fee reports submitted by the county sheriff in the amount of $2,436.69 and $4,869.05 respectively.
Sir. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Brens?
Aye.
Hugley?
Aye.
Weems?
Aye.
Wular?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Next order of business is consider, I need to sign those first. Okay, next order of business is to consider resolution number 2023-05 to support LB 234 and the mandatory reporting by railroad companies operating in the state of Nebraska about complaints received from the public regarding blocked railroad crossings.
Mr. Chairman, I asked our deputy county attorney, Tyler Volkmer, to draft this resolution for our consideration. It would be my wish that we do approve this and show formally our support for this legislative bill, LB 234, which was introduced by Senator Walz regarding reporting of at-grade crossings being blocked, particularly for long periods of time. This was an issue that I had to experience a few times this last year. In particular, one that comes to mind was, I believe, September 9th, late in the evening where the crossing at Airport Road was blocked for over four hours. And there was very little cooperation with the powers-to-be to keep that train moved. And for me, it's a safety issue. And I'm glad that this legislation is put forward to try to address this safety issue. When you take a look at our first responders in our rural area, blocking of these rail crossings when minutes can mean life or death, this is something that needs to be addressed. And so I reviewed this resolution and Tyler did a great job crafting it. And I think that this is a worthwhile thing for us to formally support, to provide as testimony on March 6th, when that bill is in, has its committee hearing.
Is that a motion?
So. So I would make the motion that we do approve and support LB 234 via resolution number 2023-05.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Chris, my question here, I support your concept here wholeheartedly. What is the, what are the mechanisms to accomplish this or is it just registering those complaints?
So there would be, the bill lays out a reporting requirement that if at-grade crossings are blocked, they get reported to the Public Service Commission. There's an annual report that is then utilized and it just provides for more transparency. It allows for if there's habitual offenses that fines are approved appropriately. And in my opinion, is a great step in the right direction to help mitigate these issues that oftentimes get swept under the rug, so.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. I thought there was a, an existing law, maybe I'm wrong, that had to do with emergency responders, whether it be ambulance or fire, that if that crossing was blocked for over 30 minutes, that we could have law enforcement either. I think the main thing they could do is issue a citation to train crew. Do you know about that, Tyler, or you were?
Do not know about that.
Okay. We've had the problem in the past and we've had to do that. The train crew, well, I can't speak for all train crews. Some train crews say, that's okay, give it to me because I don't pay it. So thank you for doing what you did.
There, and to your point, Joe, there is, there is the ability to find, but there's a lack right now of consolidating all that data and having oversight, not only through the Public Service Commission, but the report that they generate on an annual basis will go to the legislature's Transportation and Telecommunications Committee for greater oversight to ensure that these things are mitigated moving forward, so.
Okay, great discussion. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Brens?
Aye.
Weems?
Aye.
Wular?
Aye.
Hugley?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Okay, next order of business is consider resolution number 2023-06 in to support LB 31 and the continued use of the two-person train crews in the state of Nebraska.
Mr. Chairman, this is another resolution that I've had Tyler Volkmer craft for our consideration and hopeful approval. LB 31 was introduced by our own District 42 State Senator Mike Jacobson. Again, this goes right at the heart of safety issues. When you take a look at what's been in the national news with derailments, when you look at our local situation just recently in Gothenburg, there's an element of safety that needs to be at the forefront. I'm pleased to see technology advancing that allows for greater efficiencies, particularly in the rail industry. But there's something to be said about having two independent-thinking cognizant individuals on a train. And my concern is that the technology is not at a point currently, especially where it can, it can serve in lieu of having two individuals on the train. And so for me, this is again a safety issue. And I think that this board should formally support because LB 31 will be in, have its committee hearing on March 6th along with LB 234. And this goes a great distance, in my opinion, of showing support from our community from the safety aspects that this provides.
Great.
So it would be my motion that we support LB 31 formally through this resolution number 2023-06.
Okay, we have a motion? Second. And a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, and I appreciate that coming on also. I thought that had passed first round. I thought it passed 38-0, didn't it? Did it not?
Out of committee?
Well, no, it, that only came out like seven or eight zero. But I thought that I saw in there where they'd had a 38-0 vote when I was, I looked up. It was the only one that I saw come through like that. I'm probably wrong.
This bill hasn't had its committee hearing yet, so it hasn't made it to the floor.
You got the wrong one. Sorry about that. Oh, you know, I wonder, was this, was this, did this make first round last year? Maybe that's what I'm looking at.
I don't believe so.
Okay, anyway, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Brens?
Aye.
Weems?
Aye.
Hugley?
Aye.
Wular?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Thank you for staying on top of those comments very much.
Okay, next order of business is right-of-way applications submitted by Custer Public Power District. And this is for a three-phase line. Is that correct?
That is correct, Chairman.
Are you familiar with this location?
I am. I'm somewhat familiar with some of the mechanism of what's going on. Essentially, our only role in this is to approve crossing the right-of-way north of Maxwell. However, I've heard from some constituents that are questioning why Custer's traversing 10 miles from the sub north of North Platte on 83 to this golf course when they already have an existing service line going up to North Maxwell Road. So it's probably out of bounds to tell you we have anything to say about that. But nevertheless, it's, I do take issue with the fact that in some small way, we are contributing to what I think is redundancy in encroaching on property owners who don't want this braid across them. It's a 7,200-volt line that will be trunched in, as I said, approximately 10 miles from the information I've been given this weekend. Again, our only small portion is where they're crossing the county road. And I believe this is one in the same project. I couldn't be mistaken, but that's the information I gathered yesterday.
Chris, I mean, I'm sorry. What, where did you say it was trunched up, 83?
They, the proposal is to go from the substation north of 83, if you're familiar with that, about seven miles north, and go across 10 miles, more or less, to the new golf course facility to supply power.
Going across private ground?
Correct. A number of properties, there's at least one property owner here, Mr. Licking, Don Licking is here. It will impact him. It will impact Lynn Meyer, Vinton's, I'm not sure the rest of the folks, but.
Paul Lor.
Paul, Summer, I don't know that there's a consensus agreement to this. And Custer, and I, I'm a little bit biased because I'm a Custer client. And I've dealt with Custer before and sometimes they're not as fair-minded as I would think they should be on these things. But I think as much as anything, I want to raise awareness that there should be a dialogue with these property owners for some compensation for how they're impacted. And again, you know, we're probably, I'm probably out of bounds in the fact it's not, it's not in our realm of authority. But I take issue with the fact that they haven't consulted these property owners, to my knowledge. Don?
They've talked to.
Sir, would you come up here, please? We're going to let you have front stage. And we won't even charge you for it, Don. Paul's next. Please have a seat, state your name. And we have a sheet there. We'd like to have your autograph, please, so we know you are. Please, right there beside you, if you'd please sign that for me.
Oh, right here?
Yeah, and tell us who you are.
I'm Don Licking. I live eight miles north of North Platte. And that substation is just across the fence from me where they're wanting to take off the, the new golf course north of Maxwell. And they'll cross me about half a mile with their underground cable. And my problem with them is they ask them what I was going to get for compensation. And they said they normally don't give compensation for a service line. Well, they'll be making money off the deal and I'll be tearing up my ground. I think I'm entitled to some compensation. I'm asking for a measly 600-foot of underground line to go to my irrigation well from their three-phase line that goes a different direction. And so far, they haven't agreed to it, but I'm supposed to meet you at the middle of eleven o'clock this morning.
You know, I think your answer was they ordinarily don't give compensation. Maybe they ordinarily don't have an attorney requesting that. It certainly sounds like a civil matter to me, and there should be compensation, but...
Well, they're gonna do some damage.
In their conversations with you, Don, do they say that they will return your property to its original condition? Are they gonna replant where they dig up?
No, we would never discuss that part of it. I just, I just told them what I wanted and temporary ended the conversation.
Do we know how deep this line is to be?
Well, I'm assuming it's four foot, but I don't know if they've ever heard.
Five, I believe.
Five? Okay.
I suppose this here, forty-two inches.
Is, what's, that's applied in the permit?
Yeah, it's covered up with sticky, okay. There we go. Not less, not less than forty-two inches below the surface of the public road and public right-of-way.
Yeah, that would be our portion.
I don't know about...
We wouldn't know about your property, though.
Yeah. I'm just assuming most of that stuff's four foot for some reason.
You would hope.
Water lines? Okay. Good, I hope you have good success at your meeting at eleven o'clock.
Good, thank you.
Thank you for your input.
No problem, thanks, Don.
Anyone else wish to make a comment? Okay, colleagues, what is your pleasure? We, first off, I do have a note here that this is, the portion going across our county road has been approved by Lincoln County Road Superintendent Jason Schultz. Okay, and we do have a right-of-way permit check accompanying the application, which, by the way, is for twenty-five dollars.
Well, as I said earlier, Chairman Mike, my stance is more symbolic than anything, I realize this is out of the realm of the permit itself, but I do wish and hope that there's a better process moving forward for property owners and that are impacted by this utility. So, for that reason alone, I'm probably gonna vote in protest against this in principle.
Well, question that I have for you, Tyler. When this application like this is made, certainly there is, it's brought to our attention because of county road. Is the same type of application brought to the landowners as well that they cross?
Is there an existing easement, do we know?
That would be the first question, is there an easement that they already have? Because if they already have an easement, they're gonna go right down their easement, and there's nothing anybody can do about that. But that's a question for the landowners, which is probably well outside of your ten dollars.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Just wanting information as to how this is taken care of down the road previous in the future.
In terms of acquired easements.
Sir? Please come up here, Paul. Please state your...
It's right on the back.
Do you need another sheet?
Oh, are we out?
We've had a lot of visitors, huh?
Yeah, I guess so.
It's right on the bottom.
Oh, here we go. I found a blank here.
Okay, good. Please state your name, sir?
Paul Orr.
Yes, sir, may you, if you have something you'd like to add in this case?
Yeah, I've got three hundred and twenty acres that they would like to come across, and they proposed that they would put it along the fence line, and I believe it was fifteen feet from the fence, existing fence line, would be my north boundary. And then, if we provide them with an easement, then we can't build a structure of any kind over the line, or I think it's within, I believe what I was told was thirty feet either side of the line. So, if we decide to build a corral, that's gonna prohibit us from, you know, doing any development there in the future. So, that, that does have an impact on us, and, and, yeah, it, it does concern me what happens with that land up there. I bought it in 2011 and didn't have the equity and didn't have the money, but I bought it and, you know, with hard work got it paid for, and cut down every cedar tree with an axe by hand, and dug up every piece of concrete, and so that piece of ground, what happens up there is a concern to me, and I just wanna be aware of what they're doing and be part of the process, so.
Did I hear you say that they were gonna give you, or you were gonna give them an easement?
They, they would, it would have to be, every landowner would have to, would have to have an eas, they'd have to have an easement for every landowner that they cross, yes. And that would also give them to write, anytime that there's some kind of a problem with the line, they'd be out there digging holes and they, because they have to be able to maintain the line and, and do service.
And what was that easement gonna be worth to you, to the landowner?
Don't know.
You would be the one deciding.
Okay, thank you for your input, Paul. Okay, colleagues, or, excuse me, anyone else wish to make comment in this regard? Colleagues?
For the sake of moving on and, and having this further discussion on it, I would move that we approve the right-of-way application submitted by Custer Public Power District.
Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
And a second, any other discussion?
When it comes to infrastructure, to Kent's point, and I appreciate your point, I do think that there's a need for redundancy because that increases reliability, but I am concerned about lack of communication with adjacent property owners, and I would hope that better steps are taken in the future to have those conversations and come to agreements. But for the sake of what's before us, and this agenda item, it seems pretty straightforward as far as this application.
The only, the only comment that I might make is to the landowners, if we're going eight miles, it affects a lot of landowners. Sometimes the best way to get someone's attention is with somebody that understands the law and attorney, and I might be, you might think about collectively getting a number of landowners and so that you can agree on some kind of a common theme or cost or something, because otherwise, I think you're probably, in my opinion, at the disadvantage of the company, but if you collectively get together, I think it just makes your point stronger, so whatever's worth.
As a landowner who has, you guys have been to our place, we have a huge MPPD transmission line that runs right through our property. It was there when we bought the place, but the previous owners, many farmers and ranchers in our neighborhood got together and fought it and were unsuccessful. And I will say this, they are very good about working with us, they notify us before coming onto our property, but I sure wish it wasn't there, even though I like my electricity. So, I think Joe's exactly right, work together and be firm in what your expectations are. Tyler, can you clarify for me on these applications? If they check all the boxes, do we really have any power to do anything other than approve it?
I don't think we're asked to approve it, no. You're giving them permission to go across the road. Now, they can do the same thing they can do to landowners at some point, which is get permission ordered. This is the nice one.
Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second? Roll call, please.
Brens?
I'm gonna say no, because I think that that will send a message that they need to have the communication, and my hope is that once that's hashed out, they can come back before us with this application again.
I'm gonna say yes, because this board is, as Tyler will tell us, cannot, should not become involved in civil matters. Over my last almost forty years, we have become involved in a couple, and it's, it hasn't turned out well for the county. So, looking at crossing our, the one thing that we're voting on is crossing our one road in one location, I'm gonna vote yes.
Weems?
No.
Luler?
Looking at all the information, I'm gonna remove my, how I feel about our property, and, and I agree with Joe. What we're approving here today is just the small portion going underneath the county road, and it has approval by our county road superintendent, so I will say yes.
Woodruff?
Same reason, I will say yes, because all we are approving here is under the county road. I wish the landowners good fortune in their dealings with the utility company, yes. Motion passes.
Yeah. Thank you for your input.
Thank you.
Okay, next order of business, right-of-way application submitted by Lumen Technologies. And this fifty pair of cables that is taking place. Help me with this location, if you would, please. Judy, do you have information in this regard about this? No. Century Leak is...
You looked at just Jason?
Jason, have you looked at this one?
A bunch of relocation that they're doing along eighty-three.
Highway eighty-three.
Highway eighty-three for the new project they're planning on doing there, so it's...
They're moving, they're moving utilities out of...
And then they tie into our county right-of-way, so.
This would be on South eighty-three where they're gonna be doing the road, whitening the road in the new construction.
And if there's KNEB, and then I think there's somewhere in the middle, backup on Lumen as well.
Okay.
North Lake.
Okay. Now, does this require a application as well? Check or anything from Lumen? Oh, okay, okay.
When Jason brings them to us, they have the payment and his, okay.
Okay.
He does the first.
Okay, sounds great.
Yep.
Thank you.
How, how long of linear feed are they proposing?
Uh, in our right-of-way, it's not, I think it's only a couple hundred feet coming off of the main spur that runs down Highway three, into the state right-of-way. So, it's just more or less tied into the existing, the existing pedestals in there, just moving that portion.
Five hundred feet into an existing box, it looks like, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Okay.
And they are going ten feet deep according to the drawing. They're gonna get it out of way, out of the way, and...
Even if the road...
Washes out?
Washes out or blows out with the winds, yeah. Okay, colleagues, what is your pleasure? I do have the... I have a check here from Lumen, and I have okay for Lincoln County Road Superintendent Jason Schultz.
Chairman, I've made a motion that we approve the application for right-of-way by Lumen Technologies as presented. President Chairman has signed.
We have a motion and a second, any other discussion?
The check was for twenty-five dollars.
Twenty-five dollars.
I think it probably bears, making a note that we should probably be looking at what our fee structure looks like for projects utilizing right-of-way.
Twenty-five dollars.
Twenty-five dollars doesn't go a whole lot, and that, that fee was set decades ago, so.
Who's in charge of setting that, or renegotiating that fee?
That would probably...
Probably be us.
Yeah, that's us.
Well, let's do it then, because this is, you know, quite honestly, twenty-five-dollar check is ludicrous.
Would that fall underneath the Planning and Zoning Committee? Probably take a look at that.
Please do. Could we vote yet?
No.
Paul, please. Oh, excuse me, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Hugley?
Aye.
Luler?
Aye.
Weems?
Aye.
Brens?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Just one signature here is all I see, is that right, Don?
Yes.
Okay, moving right along here. It is nine-thirty-six, we will recess as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners and convene as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization. Again, abiding by the Open Meeting Act as amended copy, which is at the meeting of the interest of this room. First order of business, approve minutes regarding Lincoln County Board of Equalization meeting held on February twenty-one, 2023.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes regarding the Lincoln County Board of Equalization meeting held on February twenty-first, 2023.
Second.
Motion and second, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Luler?
Aye.
Weems?
Aye.
Hugley?
Aye.
Brens?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye. Next order of business, certificates of correction and refund as submitted by the county assessor. We have a report from the assessor's office that we have, no, thank you. Next order of business is motor vehicle tax exemption application submitted by the county treasurer. Would our county treasurer please come up and make her presence be known? That's to make Tyler happy.
Yeah, to make Tyler happy, anything for him.
Yes, that's all we gotta do here. Uh, looks like maybe we have just one.
Alex Kurtz, county treasurer?
Oh, thank you, ma'am.
Good morning, Alex.
Good morning.
Uh, looks like we have one application.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, are you ready for a motion?
I am ready for a motion.
Make a motion that we approve the exemption application by the New Life Assembly Church. It's for a Chrysler twenty-twelve Town Country used for religious purposes, recommended for approval by our county treasurer.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hugley? Weems?
Aye.
Luler?
Aye.
Brens?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye. Thank you very much for helping us out with that. Okay, is there any other business to come before the Lincoln County Board of Equalization? Okay. At this time, nine-thirty-nine, we will adjourn as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization and reconvene as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners, nine-thirty-nine. Okay, next order of business is discuss and consider acceptance of bid for probation office remodel project one oh-three through one-eleven, North Dewey. I believe maybe information from the, I was not present last week at the opening of the bids. From what I can gather, there was maybe some concern about a item called some demolition, and maybe that has been clarified? Am I correct on that?
Yes, you are correct. As I stated last week in our meeting, the majority of the demolition has been completed by our Building and Ground Committee. There is a small amount of demolition left at the probation... There is a small amount of demolition left at the probation building that our buildings and grounds did not feel comfortable doing because it involved structural walls, um, around the ADA, or the bathrooms that we are going to make into ADA compliant. So, um, we sat down, I believe on Wednesday of last week, with, um, Dowhauer Construction and our architect and worked through some details and I believe we are ready to move forward.
Okay, Mister Chairman, just one question and I, I have bad hearing, so bear with me. I think you said it was, the demo was done by the committee?
By the building and grounds crew.
Crew, thank you.
I might have said committee.
Thank you, I just wanna make sure the man said it right, so, thank you very much and my hearing, my hearing is terrible.
We supervised.
There you go, thank you, Chairman.
So, what's, what's left to demolish then?
So, in the south hallway of the building, there are two tiny bathrooms. The walls are structural, they hold up part of the ceiling of the building and those walls all need to come down. In order to make that area ADA compliant, which is necessary for the use of the building, we have to make those rooms much bigger. And so that's the demolition there. And then, um, we added a hallway at the front of the building, um, for also ADA compliance and they'll have to bore through tile walls. Am I correct? Yes. And so that is the demolition that is left.
Lee, would you come join us, please?
I was just about there.
Please, um, state your name and sign in for us, please.
Lee Davies.
Just turn that paper over, maybe? I think Paul said he found a blank one in there.
Nothing, I thought he did too. Yes, he did, there's a whole sheet here.
Thank you, so go ahead and continue, Commissioner Lularne, and I'll have Mister Davies here that could help with some further clarification if needed.
Okay, um, so we sat down on Wednesday and worked through some of the details, um, and as I said, I believe that we're ready to move forward with either accepting or rejecting the, the loan bid that was received.
The other member of the building and grounds committee, Commissioner Williams, would you, would you comment, please?
I will, I'll probably, credit, it'll be the fly in the ointment, but I have a lot of heartburn over this number. It's nothing against an old friend, Mister Luttrell, or his organization at all, appreciate that they bid this project, but my consternation is that this number is so far over our high estimation, guesstimation, it's given me a lot of grief about the expenditure of a wholesale gutting of the electrical, the lighting and so forth. And I don't know, and we'll let Lee discuss this at length, hopefully in detail, but I don't know how practical it is to say, we reject the bid, we're gonna go back to time and material and leave the electrical as is, uh, do the, uh, find the appropriate contractors to put the flooring down, fix the drywall, et cetera. And I apologize coming in to this late in the day, late in the stage of the process, because I know you and Michaela put a lot of work into this and I appreciate that. But I do want, I, I do wanna hear the justification for moving forward with this number and if in fact there is a plan B without a wholesale overhaul of the light, the lighting, because that appears to be a huge portion of the expense of this project. And, uh, it's not the only one, but the cost overruns were, I think, forty on electrical, maybe thirty on finishes, am I right, Michaela's that member right?
Yeah.
And, I mean, this is the only chance we're gonna get to talk about this, so I wanna talk about it.
Absolutely.
And if the vote goes against me, I'm good, I'll do my job on the committee and we'll move forward, make, to have a good end product. But I do, I do want Lee to touch on some of these things and maybe why we're this far out of bounds as far as, uh, our expenditure that we anticipated. I, I will remind everyone, I supported the purchase, but I withheld my support of the overall overhaul because I wanted to see what that number was. That's been scaring me a little bit, so, so, that's said in my say.
Kent?
Yes.
I'm gonna agree with you, I, I think all of us were a little, um, taken aback by the number that actually came in. There are some reasonable explanations, I'll let Lee address most of those with us. Part of that is, I failed to mention last week, but we did make a change between Lee coming in and, and giving us the initial estimate and I believe that was late August, September. You know, we all know what's going on in the economy, there have been some price increases in materials and labor. But we did make a pretty major change to the front of the building by adding a hallway and I did not speak to that last week. That hallway, um, makes the building useful for wheelchair-bound clients. And without that hallway, um, we just weren't getting good access to the conference room, to the ADA bathrooms, and that did add a considerable amount of money to the project. And, and I'm gonna let Lee take it from here.
Well, I just have a quick question to that point, though. Um, I mean, West Central's been utilizing this building for years, West, West Central District Health Department, um, they had to have been wheelchair-capable in their operations, being a health department, were they not?
So they weren't using the entire building, they were just using that main part, the one oh, the one eleven portion of the building was what West Central used. They didn't need access for, um, handicap clients to the rest of the building and, um, they must have been grandfathered in because they did not do a structural remodel of the building like we are doing. That's the only explanation I can come up with.
So, this, this is the restroom one eleven, you're saying they were probably using, right?
Yeah, this is the only, it was almost ADA compliant restroom, was in the northeast portion of the building.
And are we changing that any?
That, that is part of the bid, yes, we are gonna make it fully ADA compliant.
And that is room designated one eleven, correct?
Correct.
And what are we doing in there to make it, what are we doing, Lee?
Lee, can you tell us what the plans call for making room one, one, one ADA compliant?
Yes, basically what we're doing is there's a little bump out behind the toilet, we're removing, it shrinks that down to under five feet. By realigning that wall to the east of the toilet, back to the wall that aligns with the sink, we get our full five foot in there.
The little squiggly.
Yes, back to that little squiggly area, I don't know why that's like that, but I'm, I'm sure it was something existing, I'm sure. But anyway, opening that up and allowing, and moving the sink to the other side, um, allows us to meet ADA in there and, uh, we can put new grab bars in and, and it, it meets current codes to ADA.
I think Michaela had shown me an estimate of ten, twelve, fourteen thousand, what it was.
Uh, this right here, so that was one of our, our deduct was, um, to provide the renovation cost of toilet in room one, one, one.
So if we do that work to that one restroom, is that the fourteen thousand?
Yes.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, but man, I have been plenty of times. If we do that, will that not, will that serve as a unisex restroom for this building based on occupancy?
Yes, that's how, I mean, it would.
Okay, thank you.
With that being said, Joe, one of the reasons we felt that it was imperative that we have ADA compliant restrooms in both sections of the building, these are the daytime operations, all of their evening classes that they do for their clients who are, um, trying to, you know, reintegrate back into the community are held in this portion of the building. If we don't have an ADA compliant bathroom here, they would have to unlock the secured offices and, and these people would come around into this built, part of the building.
Right, so, okay, so they would come this, this way probably?
Yes.
This is going through this waiting room right here, that's
Well, these, these aren't waiting rooms, these are our laboratories. So these are medical laboratories where they do the, uh, testing.
Office two oh four is the drug testing laboratory, basically, office.
And so the, this restroom primarily will be used for taking urine samples for the clients and it's right next to the, to the laboratory.
The probation office would like to use that back door where their drug people come in and, and come in that back door, right to that bathroom, do their drug testing right there in that waiting.
This, this one thirteen waiting cannot be a lab, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think it can be a lab, I can buy that being a lab because when you get people into this restroom, they, they have access to this area.
That's waiting, it's waiting for them.
It's waiting, seating for the people who are
I understand, but it's not a locked lab, that's all I'm saying.
No, no.
Not a locked lab.
This would be the lab.
These are the labs here, yes.
That room with the sink, the two oh four is the lab itself.
This is the lab.
Got you.
This is the waiting room.
So, and I apologize for piecemealing this, but the other question that came up, Lee, was, uh, that front adendum here where we create a common hall in the front of the building?
Yes.
Do you have any clue what that particular portion of it would cost?
Cost wise? I don't, I don't have a breakout for that, I, they didn't break out a separate area for that.
That's fine, I just, um, had to ask the question.
Sure.
Trying to piece, or trying to
The, the idea that came in, the fact that when we walked through there, every time we walked through there, you had to walk through an office, through another office to get to the two different sides.
Side, yeah.
And we thought, you know, a corridor would be so much more convenient and useful.
Certainly.
And it makes two extra offices that actually are closed-in offices.
Closed-in offices versus having two open offices slash whatever you wanna call them, walk, walkways.
And Lee, do I, do I recall that, that doorway between waiting one hundred and that corridor two hundred, that door has to be put in through a block wall, correct?
Yes. That door and the opening between corridor three hundred and corridor two oh one, there's a four-foot opening just to the east of the entries there, um, and we didn't put a door in there, we just opened it up for circulation there and that is also a CMU wall that they're having to cut through, or not a CMU, it's a clay tile wall. But it is a structural wall.
And how many doors did we add when we added that?
The, the doors we added would be the two at the corridor two hundred and the office one eleven, two eleven. We also did a little addition with the back in the rooms three oh six and three oh eight and three oh nine by creating a little corridor there. Instead of having to walk through an office to get to an office, we put a little corridor there and added a door there, um, and there currently wasn't a door back to that back office two oh nine, so those are a couple additional areas that kinda added some cost.
Do we know if probation is immediately gonna be utilizing the entire space and need for having all these private offices?
It, it is their intention at this time to use all of the space.
Well, their intention is, but is that immediately or is that as they grow?
No, immediately, yeah, no, as, as, they have a need for the space right now, but they also feel like with the size of some of the rooms, as they grow, which we will as we grow our community, they will be able to put up partitions, you know, like small partition walls to handle that growth.
Uh, Lee, do you wanna kind of run down what we, you know, how we kicked out some of the cost overrun?
Yep.
From our guesstimation that we discussed?
The majority of the cost estimate overrun was probably the electrical lighting. It came in almost double, um, compared to what I had, um, and I guess that was a pretty good guesstimation, just guesstimation with what I put in. I think most of that's due to materials, I'm still waiting from the electrical, uh, company to verify that exactly, um, where that is amount. We did go in with one-to-one fixtures, we didn't really change locations of fixtures or totally reroute everything. Pretty much everything and every light is just pull down a light, put up a light, um, with the exception of some corridors. We did add a few there because they're dim and they're too far apart and we added motion sensors in those. Um, I think one of the options was to leave all the switches and just do motions, you know, leave all the switching as is and just put in new switches versus motion sensors and both between the, excuse me, the electrical contractor himself and the electrical supplier, they basically said there's really no cost, so they, that's why they submitted the zero cost change in that. Plus it was also the way to go per code with having some of the motion sensors in there anyway. So mainly it comes down to, I think, uh, I, I, my guess is labor's more than what I estimated and I would say fixture, uh, cost is more than what I figured, that would be the biggest part of it. The other part of it would be the finishes, the floor, the walls, the ceilings, and there again, I don't have a breakdown, it was another twenty-five thousand there, more than what I had. And so I'm not sure exactly, you know, what portion of it is. You know, we know we kinda got a twenty-nine thousand dollar deduct for paintings, which I think I had roughly, um, about thirty thousand in there for painting, so I'm, I'm, uh, not exactly sure, must, the, the, the flooring shouldn't have come in higher, um, unless it was the labor that came in higher on that. So I'm not exactly sure where the twenty-five thousand extra for that is.
And I don't have my notes, but didn't, weren't finishes, and I'm not sure what else was, wasn't finishes one of the big overruns too, or not?
Yeah, yeah, that's, i- if you look at it, it was at nine, I had about ninety-three thousand, it came in at a hundred and twenty, which was about a twenty-five thousand dollar overrun. That's why I say, I, I know it's, it, it deals with the finishes, which, you know, would, would include the floors, the flooring, uh, the wall painting, the ceiling painting. And I think at one time we were not gonna paint the one eleven, uh, and I think my original bid didn't have the painting of the one eleven building portion, because it's got a pretty decent ceiling in it already, uh, but in this bid, they're painting the entire building ceilings.
I see.
But then I, like I said, it's still twenty-five, you know, that's not costing twenty-five thousand, obviously, but I'm not sure exactly, you know, what else that isn't costing. I do think the FRP in the restrooms came in a lot higher than what I had estimated, uh, that would be the fiber reinforced plastic that goes on the walls, um, but it is a lot less than if we would try to tile them, of what, like what we did here in, in this building. The carpet tiles that they're putting in is from Select Abbey, who did all the flooring in here, uh, he bid the exact same thing that is in here and he bid it exactly, you know, per cost and it's, it's in there for that. The other overrun was the doors and the windows and there again, I, I, we added a few doors, but I think also my door cost was a little low, talking to Galvin was probably a little low what I estimated on those. And when you add up twelve doors and, you know, at probably a thousand dollars below each door than what I was estimating, that's where we come up with twelve thousand there.
The fixtures lead back to the fixtures, uh, I don't know if I asked you this the other day, but per unit, do you know what those are?
I do not, that's part of the electrical that
Just
Right, and you know, I had shown you the electrical fixture that was specified and I, I had gotten a, a request to have a substitute one, which I think we would have approved, but it came in at four o'clock the night before and it's kinda unfair to send out to get everybody to bid that at that time, so that is something we're also lurking into to see if we can come up with a different, basically it's the same type of fixture, it might have a little different look, but hopefully it has a different cost with it and see if we can do some savings in doing a different fixture from a different company. Go ahead.
Leon, what did we do on storefront, did we, are the dark windows new, are they all new or what, what is that?
The dark windows that are already in there, the dark bronze ones are gonna stay, they're not changing. What we're changing is What we're changing is the one door that swings into the main corridor, it's a, it swings in, we're going to swing it out. And then the second door that goes into that office, we're actually just putting in a window there.
This one here, we're replacing this door with a window.
The, the dark line on the windows to the north facing the street, is that, are we filling that in, or are we getting rid of it?
No, basically what it is, is there's a, there's a four-inch or five-inch, uh, baseboard that's on there that looks like a quarter-inch piece of plywood that's painted and looks horrible, and I'm basically fixing that.
Okay, so, so the biggest cost then, doors and windows, are actually doors?
Yes.
And I'm surprised that they're that high, also myself, I just looked at the numbers and ran some unit numbers, and, um, would have been right where you were at, so.
Any other questions for, uh, Lee?
Yes, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, so, okay. No, thank you, I don't have.
Anything more you want to, well?
Well, I had a question for Tyler, but you went to coffee.
I, I have a question for Tyler, too.
I think we anticipated, didn't we?
Questions that you have, yeah?
Uh, not for Lee. We might have to go retrieve that guy.
Especially when he knows that he's putting us way behind schedule.
Yeah, it's his fault.
Lee, I want to thank you for all the work you've done on this, we've been working on this several months, and, uh, okay, here he comes, sit down because you are getting ready to receive some questions.
We knew that, we knew that.
Okay, uh, first question for?
Mike, I'll start.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, Tyler, so, well, I, I don't want to, I don't want to harm our bidder. I do not, I appreciate that they bid this. But it's a little murky to me what our options are, if we, if this number gives me, if I'm not the only one this number gives a lot of heartburn to, and we wanted to rework this, is there any way to approve this project and address perhaps work orders down the road? Or are we bound to just simply accept as is and/or reject and start over? That's a lot, that's a big question.
Change orders are kind of a gray area. Um, I had a couple of conversations with some people that are doing this normative live, a couple of conversations with NACO, and that is the official response. Change orders are kind of gray, um, but not specifically addressed by the Purchasing Act. What I can tell you is, as far as this bid goes, the board either accepted or they can reject it, and that's it, those are two options. If you accept it and then choose to do change orders down the road, um, you always run the risk that somebody could try to invalidate one of the board's actions in one of those change orders. Uh, I don't know that it's a real high likelihood of that happening or being successful, but that is the risk. I would say, as long as the board is hopefully doing change orders that make the project cheaper and not more expensive, public's probably not going to point. But if you want to go with that bid, that's hopefully the only option, just to have change orders.
Okay.
But that's assuming that the contractor's willing to do them.
Well, and so, back to me, that's why I was trying to delve into the electrical side because I was trying to figure out if you could take the components of this project and somehow cut something out of the herd.
We, we do a lot of, sometimes value engineering is what we call it, where we, and that's exactly what's at part of that, you know, trying to come up with a different light fixture. Um, I do have a couple other items that we were looking at, um, that I haven't gotten numbers back from, from Galvin yet, so I didn't want to really comment completely on them. Um, but we're, we're looking at some, uh, some of the wall finishes, uh, with the drywaller. He thought the bid was a little outrageous, and he thought he could come back with some savings there, too. And then obvi- obviously the, the, the light fixtures is the other one. Uh, he did come back with a different door alternate, but it was savings twenty dollars a door, and it was going to a cheaper, the wood faced door versus the plastic laminate door that we talked about.
And I'm not necessar- I'm not necessarily in favor of some of those things either, but, um, and the rest of the board may not have the consternation I do with this bid, but, um, I just, I, I just wanted to pose that question to Tyler, if we had any latitude within this project to pare some things back, for the lack of a better phrase. And I was trying, go ahead, I'm sorry, go, go ahead.
Joe, you have a question for Lee?
Uh, Lee mentioned value engineering, I believe, and I'm not the attorney, so don't take this as legal opinion, but the, under the, uh, current bid statutes for public entities as we are, I believe we have the option to, uh, accept the apparent low bid, not, uh, accept isn't the right word, um, and to authorize the architect to work with the owner and the contractor to see if there are cost savings items that can come back for consideration to the board prior to signing of a contract, value engineering, so.
Okay, and along that line, Tyler, change orders can be up and down both?
But this wouldn't be a change order because we don't have a contractor. It would, you only get a change order after there's a signed contract, go ahead.
I think what Joe is proposing is, the board accepts the bid, and before the county would enter into a contract with Dowhauer to actually do the work, uh, there would be another conversation between Dowhauer understanding we're going to take their bid lead, and then probably the building committee to try to find some areas where you can value engineer, so that the contract price ends up being less than the bid price, without having to go through individual change orders. And given the fact there's only one bidder, um, the board wouldn't be prejudiced in really doing that. And again, as long as you're going down and not up, I can't imagine that people would rather spoil the public opposition.
Joe, is that?
That, that would be my recommendation.
I would second that, like that, too, that would be my thoughts.
And you call that value engineer?
Yes.
Kayla?
You have a question for Tyler?
Um, I, my question for Tyler was exactly what Kent's question for Tyler was, so.
Okay, um.
You want to make that motion?
I will, if I can do it right.
Chairman?
Chairman, are there any other points we need to discuss before we move on to a motion?
I just, I'd like to make a comment, um, a couple comments, first, I, I appreciate the bid. Uh, Dowhauer Construction does an amazing job and produces a beautiful finished product.
I'll second that, I've worked with them on two projects in this building, thank you.
But I have consternation with this price, uh, you're not alone in that, I think we all do. Um, and I think it's important to, to point out, I mean, we're, this is a lot of money. This is a lot of money for an unfunded mandate for us to house a state agency.
Good point.
And we've got to do, i- if, if we're going to do this project, we've got to find some significant cost savings. Because we're, we're approaching, what was a deal, uh, for a building is quickly turning into not a deal for the taxpayers, in my opinion.
With that being said, Chris, I've done my research, and I agree. It was, it's more than what any of us thought it was going to be when we entered into this deal. And we did get a great deal on the building, I mean, six thousand twenty-eight square foot for forty-three dollars a square foot, in today's market, that was a heck of a deal. Um, all along, you know, when I, um, asked the professionals if we were to purchase a move-in-ready building about per square foot, what, what's the going rate? And it was anywhere between ninety-five dollars a square foot to a hundred and twenty-five dollars a square foot, depending on the finishes. Um, so, you know, even, even if we accept the full price bid, that puts us between the purchase price of the building and the finishing about a hundred and two dollars a square foot. Um, when we purchased the building across the street here in two thousand and nine, we purchased, uh, one-ten East Third Street, which is, um, right around four thousand square feet for three hundred and ninety thousand dollars. And that building had to be gutted and remodeled, too. So, comparing two thousand and nine to today, I, I think the expenditure is about market area.
I, but, but to that point, yes, you're getting the, the word from the professionals. We heard it straight from Lonnie's mouth, that he would be tickled to death to be able to move into that building as it was because the conditions were already better than what he was dealing with. And he, he agreed, uh, to my point, I was not interested in building a Taj Mahal.
Even with these finishes, we're still not doing a Taj Mahal.
But my point is, I mean, we have surface conduit, it works, it's functional.
That's not being changed.
We have, but, do we need to do all the dry, drywall work, can we paint? There, there are certain things that I think that we need to find significant cost savings with.
I mean, the only.
To make this building functional for their needs as a state agency that we're only supposed to house. That's, I just, I'm putting my thoughts in my comments.
I don't think we're doing a lot of drywall work.
Not a lot, I mean, it's not going to.
The lighting?
The lighting is significant.
The lighting is functional as it is?
And that, the lighting is the one area where we were all astonished by the number.
And that was the one.
And it's the one area we're going to go back and, and work on.
We're over a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars over our top estimate on what this work would cost. That is, that's significant.
Eighty-five thousand over the top estimate.
Eighty-five, yeah.
Hundred and thirty over the lower end of the estimate.
Which is a lot, I agree.
I mean, we're, we're, we're over six hundred thousand dollars all in on this building.
Yeah.
For a building that we got at a steal at forty-three dollars a square foot, that Lonnie said that he could move right into and, and do his job, and his team could do their job.
Well, with, to some extent, we have to do the ADA bathrooms, that, that is, to get us into compliance, per square footage, I don't know that that's.
I don't know if they, because of the size of the building, that we could get away with one ADA bathroom.
My, my point is, is we've got to find, for, for me to support the significant cost savings for the taxpayers.
And that's what we'll work on.
And I think the value engineering's that Joe mentioned is a good way to approach that.
But this has nothing, I, my comments, my feelings, I want to make clear, they have nothing, uh, as far as frustration with the bidder, the bidder does a fantastic job. They are putting in their bid to the scope of, of, of what was proposed. I suppose I just have concerns about the scope of what was proposed, so. Um, I just want to make sure that, that you understand that, my points there.
Okay. Other discussion, I, I really, I really feel proud of our work here from the standpoint that we have covered a lot of ground here, and I think we have all, we all have the intent to do the, if we do this project, to do it in the best interest of the taxpayers in Lincoln County. Although, I should say that the building was purchased with ARPA funds, and this remodel probably will be done with those. And the building across the street that you mentioned for three hundred and ninety thousand, plus all the work that was done on it, was done with Lincoln County taxpayer money.
That is correct.
So, with that in mind, any other discussion?
Just to point out, ARPA funds are still taxpayer dollars.
Not, not taxpayer, not, not local taxpayer dollars.
I'm not minimizing your comments, I'm.
Not local taxpayer dollars.
So, any other discussion?
So, I think an area that we have forgotten to talk about, that was talked about when we made the decision to purchase this building, is rent versus ownership. We are going to earn our money back, um, I think Lonnie was the one that pointed out, in the ten years that we've been renting a building, we could have done this work for that amount of money. So, it, it will take some time to realize the savings, but there will be savings. We're no longer paying rent on, and on a building that we would never have owned. So, there, there is payback, it'll just be down the road.
I haven't calculated those numbers, what is the timeframe for the ROI, the return on our investment here?
Uh, initially.
If we, if we go with this bid?
On the initial figures, um, that we had brought before us in December, it was less than eight years for a return on the money. So, if, if we were using local taxpayer money to do this in eight years.
We are, we are using, it is local.
It's ARPA funds, Chris.
But our local citizens paid in to the federal government, this, we, we can't.
But it's not like using local taxpayer personal property taxes when we purchased the other building.
We'll, we'll agree to disagree on that.
Okay. Good discussion.
A party.
As always.
And we get stuff out in front of us, and that's the way it should be, everyone.
I, I see a lot of, um, raised eyebrows because we're talking about probation. The, the employees, I'm not talking about from you, the employees are Lincoln County residents. They do a valuable service for our community. I can't imagine what our community would look like without probation.
I am not minimizing the work that they do at all, they provide an immensely valuable service to our community, and it's, it's absolutely worthwhile. My only point is they're a state agency, we have an unfunded mandate to provide them office space. It does not have to be top-of-the-line office space.
I, I don't.
It's not top-of-the-line office.
You'll, you'll probably be disappointed when you go in there and tour it, and say this is what.
That, that provides me even more heartburn, so, at this, at this price point, you're not, you're not swaying me to the other side.
The bathrooms will be nice, and the paint, it'll look nice, but it's definitely not going to be the bathrooms we have in this building.
I mean, I feel like a lot of the work that we're doing in the building is for compliance with ADA and safety. So, you know, the doors are a big spend, and it's for safety of the employees and the clients.
Okay. One more, any more discussion? Any points that need to be clarified, discussed further? Okay. Colleagues, what is your pleasure?
Joe, did you have a proposal?
Oh, didn't I make the motion?
No, you did.
I thought you did, but maybe not.
If you did, would you please, would you please do it again?
Okay, uh, let's start here, uh, I'd make, Mr. Chairman, I'd make the motion that we, um, accept the apparent low bidder, and, uh, we authorize the architect in conjunction with the owner to negotiate, uh, value engineering items with the contractor. Period, has nothing to do with the contract. Then to bring, to bring those, uh, proposed savings back to this board, for action at a later time to be determined, a week or two, whatever it is.
We have a motion.
Second.
And the second. Any other discussion?
So, Joe, your perception is that we will have some, some great deal of latitude, we, obviously, everyone, everyone at this table wants to do the best we can with the money, uh, the most frugal way we can complete whatever we do over there for renovations, right?
It'd be my hope that the architect heard the discussion, and that between he and the owner's representative, they would sit down with the contractor and see what items they can value engineer to perhaps come up with the better prices or perhaps even options, yes. Bring that back to this board for consideration.
That gives me some relief on my concerns, I certainly would echo the frustration that we are funding a building for a state agency, but we don't have a choice in the matter, we have to do it. Um, I don't like it either, at all. But that's something maybe we need to get our state senator involved with moving down the road.
the road for our compensation for the various probation districts. I don't know how that machine works, to be quite honest, but probably needs some attention in the legislature.
Sure.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Hugley?
Aye.
Uller?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Brunz?
No.
Woodruff?
Aye. Motion passes. You have your working orders in place, do you not?
Yes, I do. If you don't-
Thank you for your work.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. We'll be getting together again.
Okay, uh, colleagues, we have, uh, interviews with three individuals that were supposed to start at the ten o'clock. These folks are here probably away from their current work. I am asking you and our county attorney's representative if we can skip to those at this point in time and come back to the other items after we finish the interviews?
Well, by the power afforded to me by nothing in particular, we have a mine item at the top of our agenda that's able to take things out of order with the convenience of parties. So, I believe we're allowed to do that.
Do we have to vote on whether we do that or not?
Mr. Chairman, you said you didn't.
What do you folks think?
You're the chairman.
Okay, we are going to, sorry, Judy. But, uh, we are going to skip ahead to what we were planning to do at ten AM, conduct interviews for Lincoln County Building and Ground Supervisor position. Realizing that we are off schedule, we will still allow the timeframes that we had set aside for these three interviews. So what I would like to do is we will postpone the nine-thirty, the nine-forty, and the nine-fifty agenda items until after the conclusion of these Building and Grounds interviews. Okay, so, would someone like to welcome in our first interviewer? Interviewee, I should say. Or do you want me to do it?
I can do it.
Please.
Who was first on the list?
Chris, did you want to, before we do the interviews or after we do?
Welcome, sir. Sorry for the delay.
All right.
It is ten-twenty-three. We have set aside thirty minutes for interview and then ten minutes for ourselves. So, I will allow, um, you the full thirty minutes for our interview.
Okay.
So, uh, I would like to, do you wanna make the motion or do you want to start with?
Um, if you don't mind, start with me.
Okay, I'll tell you what. Thank you for coming in. Congratulations for making the final three.
Thank you.
We are very pleased with, the Personnel Committee was very pleased to have you join us previously and we are again today. So with that in mind, I'm gonna turn it over to my colleague who helped me on the initial interview process.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Wucheski, thank you for joining us today. Uh, you sure did, uh, teach me a lot in our initial interview about your experience and, uh, look forward to the conversation we have today. Uh, we do have a series of questions that, uh, this board will, uh, be asking. I think it's probably the Personnel's Committee intent that we'll just kind of go through, uh, around, around the table and allow, uh, the various commissioners to ask a question off of this list. Uh, they will be the same types of questions that all the candidates will get, uh, in the effort of, of having a, uh, even playing field, so to speak. So, um, with that said, I'd like to go ahead and kick 'em off and ask that you, go ahead and, we've all had an opportunity to review your resume and your application. Uh, I think everybody would echo that it is impressive. But with that said, why don't you go ahead and, and tell us a little bit about yourself? Describe your background and experience and what have been the areas of emphasis that qualify you for this position, the Building and Grounds Director?
You know, might, might I do something, Mr. Chairman, and, and I'm gonna, um, I'm, I'm going to ask for a, a courtesy motion only. And that is that, um, because of the time of the interviews, us getting started later, some of the other interviewees might come in. And as a courtesy, although they certainly don't have to, I would as a courtesy ask that maybe if somebody is for the next interview, that they wait maybe down the hall or something.
Would that be possible?
Oh, thank, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Hugley.
Very technical.
So I'll, I'll go ahead and I'll repeat the question for you, okay? Um, again, we've all had an opportunity to review everything. Uh, at this time, why don't you take a, a moment and just tell us about yourself? Describe your background and your experience and in particular, uh, what have been the areas of emphasis that qualify you for this position?
I grew up in Chatter, Nebraska and started working when I was twelve. So twelve to like sixteen, I worked for a, um, landscaping company up there and we installed sprinkler systems and did the whole landscaping thing for several years. And then I got on at Safeway and worked my way up in that company as a, um, to a head clerk, which was management. So then did a lot of, uh, was overseer of payroll and, um, closing the store down and making sure the shelves were stocked and overseer of, oh, probably a half a dozen people there. And then I, at that time, also joined the National Guard and worked my way up from private to, um, sergeant and was over, was, um, a cannon crewman, Houser Division, and was overseer of, uh, five people there, um, of my Houser Division there and, uh, with my crew and reported to captain and, and everything there and, um, made sure things were, kept up there. And from there, Safeway, the family took us to Scotts Bluff and, uh, I was Safeway also there. And then I, uh, quit Safeway and went to work for Girdon Homes and was in the electrical department there and overseer of eight people of a crew of, uh, installing the electrical of, uh, mobile homes. And, uh, from there, we moved to Minnesota and, uh, worked in for a construction company there. Building, um, steel buildings and, uh, then moved here with the railroad and got on electrical with the railroad and, um, have, uh, went through schooling for electrical and, um, that's about it.
Okay. Commissioner Hugley, would you want to question our interviewee?
I wanted to pick out my own question, but I have to ask number two.
Well, whichever one you want.
We-
We better, we better do it this way. I better read the question first.
Talk about mandates.
Basically, why, uh, why Cory, do you wanna be the director and, uh, what do you think sets you apart from the other candidates? Maybe explain a little bit, uh, why you'd be an asset to, to our group here.
I believe that, um, I have a knack for keeping things clean and, and nice and, uh, the grounds. Um, I believe I have a background and knack for that. Very capable of, uh, making things or, or organizing, coming up with new things. I just would like the challenge of, uh, keeping people, directing people or keeping our, our community nice. And, uh, I believe have a, a way of, uh, communicating with people, um, that, uh, and seeing what they like to do in their work, line of work, and setting them up for, you know, to, to succeed in that. I would, uh, I take great pride in our community and, uh, I would like to just, uh, stay here with my family and, and see my grandkids.
Your family and grandkids would probably appreciate that, too.
Okay. Anything else, Helen?
No, I appreciate it, thank you.
Commissioner Uller, would you like to ask a question of this particular interview?
Uh, Cory, um, great resume. Um, and I'm gonna begin by thanking you for serving your country. Um, that's a big deal in my book. With that being said, um, can you give us an example of when you set expectations and mo- monitored the performance of subordinates and how did you effectively motivate, develop, and direct them to get the most out of your work group? And what guidance and direction did you feel was the most effective in dealing with your work groups?
Um, yeah, when I was at, uh, Girdon Homes there doing, um, that kind of line of work, to get the most, I mean, it was, it was a very fast-paced deal where they had to get the wiring in the mobile home before it got drywalled and that was like the next step and, and then siding output on it and all that. But to direct, to find out, sit down with each one of them and find out what they like to do was a major thing. Some of them liked the finish work and some of them liked to run the wire and some of them liked just drilling holes and just find out and also, you know, change of what they liked to do too, you know? Helped out. Just, I guess, sitting down with each one and finding out and then when things didn't get done, to bring them one-on-one instead of calling them out in front of a bunch of people, bringing them one-on-one with you and, and explaining what didn't get done and seeing what the situation was that it didn't get done first, instead of just jumping to like, you know, you had this amount of time, there could've been something that went on that I didn't get to see. And, uh, I guess just talking to them.
Super. Anything else on that one?
No, I think you answered that very well. Thank you.
I couldn't even have thought, thought of the whole question while we first went and answered it.
Yeah, I agree.
Commissioner Williams, I'll have you, uh, take the next round if you would, please.
Thank you. Kayla stole my thunder. Thank you for your service. Thank you.
Anytime.
I have a son who served in, in Iraq, so I, I, I echo that sentiment. Thank you for your time and the service. This one pertains to, uh, monitoring performance of, of not only your work, but the work of those that would be working for you. And so inevitably in that process, as you probably know, that sometimes warrants corrective action for employees. Uh, can you talk about how you would deal with that? Um, how, how you would handle that? Yeah, I guess maybe give us an example of when you've had to do that in the process, if that's, if that's helpful.
Uh, yeah. Just bringing them one-on-one with you and I believe, and, um, explaining that I believe it wouldn't have been the first time. It would probably have been at least the third time, maybe, and, or maybe. If not, um, explaining what, what the expectation was that they weren't meeting and, uh, that they were, have been given a, a chance before and explained that, uh, the situation that was done wrong or wasn't met expectations and, uh, that either a write-up is, um, informed or due or if it's the third time, maybe a dismissal, you know, I'm sorry to see you leave, but I thought you, you know, you were, you were a good person, but, you know, you show up on time and, and the expectations of getting work done, you know, since the job, you are getting paid. It is total, you know, good luck in the future, but-
Have you had this problem with staffing or, with a staff member?
Yeah, dismiss someone.
You've had to do that?
Yeah.
So circling back to the first line, there's a lot to remember in these. So monitoring that performance of the, those employees under you and also your own performance. Are you structured in a fashion that you set your own goals, you set some bars, you set some expectations that-
Yeah.
If you were challenged or someone challenged way a subordinate was not responding under your supervision, that you could justify that I've monitored them, I have structured before them, that's my expectations. Can you, can you elaborate a little bit on that?
Um, yeah, I believe there's, when you set someone up, I believe, you know, you have to make sure they have everything that they need for the thing, but if they have all that stuff, I believe first part is mon, you know, maybe monitoring them every day instead of, you know, weekly or something. Having them come in and bring in your, and show what work they did that day and monitoring them that way. I guess seeing how they act toward that also, you know, um, react toward you, discipline them, whether they get mad or they take it on, that's the way I feel, you know? You neither accept, um, criticism or you can, and, and be able to perform and tell yourself, you know, maybe I haven't been performing well. And, uh, to be able to ask yourself why and, uh, maybe able to, uh, bring it to, to bring people's attention also of why you think they haven't been performing well and, I guess, uh-
That's it in, in a nutshell, that's how you're approaching it. Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Brunz, would you?
Yeah.
Kurt.
So, as I said in, uh, I echo everybody else's comments and as a kind of cannoneer at heart, um, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
One veteran to another's. If you would, share an experience, please, in which coordinating activities with other departments helped to ensure that services were provided in a timely manner?
That, I guess that goes along with that Girdon Home, uh, doing the mobile home deal. There was certain spots that did the plumbing and the floor was done. And then the next spot was you had to get your wiring done and then they, so there was a, you had to make sure everything was coordinated to get to a blueprint, making sure everything was done at that spot. If they were ready to move it on, then you had to get your people that were maybe doing- If they were ready to move it on, then you had to get your people that were maybe doing just makeup and then wiring the outlets and stuff, get them over there and get the job that needed to be done. And wiring done first. And, and the same over there. If it was needed to go out the door, they needed something over there, they need, had to get people coordinated over there to do that. Most people were okay with that. There were some that got upset of taking them off of one job to the other. But if they were explained, you know, what was go, how things were going, then it went well.
I'm good. Okay. Joe, I'm going to move back to you for another question, if you have one for Corey.
Corey, how do you balance cooperation with others and independent thinking? Maybe share an example. Took me five minutes to digest this, so I could even answer it. So give me just a second to think about that.
Maybe repeat that so I understand it.
Yeah. How do you balance cooperation with others and independent thinking? That was the question. Maybe share an example. And I guess that can be interpreted independent thinking by you or by the others. So that's, however you choose to interpret that.
I guess the best, best way I can do it is just communication and see maybe their background and how they, you know, ask their independent, their thinking of the situation or the job. And then to see what, to see if it coordinates with your thinking of how a job would be done or the subject of what you're talking about, you know. I guess it all depends on the background of someone, really. And having an open mind, I guess, would be the best. Not just criticizing someone else's thinking and then, because it isn't yours.
I think it's a great answer myself.
Commissioner Wheeler?
I would like to interject. We probably won't have time to get through all these questions. So if you think that there's a particular question that you really want to get to, please feel free to.
Just regarding that last question. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on. Commissioner Wheeler?
Unlike a lot of jobs that most people have in the workaday world, this position will also have the responsibility of building and maintaining a budget. Can you describe your experience with financial tasks? Were you ever responsible for requesting a budget and then adhering to it?
At the Girdon Homes, we did, had a budget just for electrical and just maintaining your inventory and keeping an eye on what you are using and how much overtime your lawyers were getting. And that's about it there. And then with Safeway, I did a budget sheet at the end of the day of all the cash registers and balancing out the budget there. Yeah, that's, and doing reconstruction or refurbishing a couple houses that we did, just keeping, you know, receipts and keeping an eye on what you were using and what you were, I guess, planning on and where you could take a, you know, where you can do it yourself. And that's about all I have of that background.
So to play off of that a little bit, how, how do you balance the importance of maintaining your budget and still getting the work done for the facility and the needs of the buildings that you're responsible for?
I guess placing the people where they would like to be working. Bet, you know, where you think you could get the most out of them. And also putting your own, getting in there and helping them sometimes. And just encouraging them.
Very good. Good answer.
Okay, Corey, I'm going to ask you a question this round through. We've heard a tremendous bit of information about the strengths that you have. I would like to hear you tell me what you think might be one of your weaknesses or what, if you could work on something to improve yourself, what would it be?
Oh, speaking, probably.
In front of, in front of other people?
Yeah. I'm a good listener to people, but speaking is not that great for me.
Okay, thank you for your, for your.
Firstly, I think you've done a great job.
Yeah, I do, too. It's always difficult to do these. I hate them.
There's something to be said about that being the hot seat. It literally feels like it's on fire. In a situation like this, so.
Nobody over here's got a gun, so. Me and him, you gotta watch. I'm going to skip down as well for time. And some of these I feel are close enough that I'm going to, I'll just make a note that I'll try to answer or try to get everybody the same questions. And I'm sure everybody else has made a little of that as well. Talk about, you know, my buzz phrase is maximizing efficiencies. And I see Chris robbing my, my phrase.
I put that in there just specifically for you, Ken.
That's a fancy way of saying, being the most frugal you can with taxpayer dollars or anybody's dollars, right? You're right. So talk about that, if you can, in your, in your operation as a machinist or a Safeway or anything else. Have you done anything to effectively make things more efficient or otherwise stretch your budget, so to speak? Or, you know, recognize that this maybe is a wasteful way to do it. So you said, I'm going to take the initiative to change that? So that would be the question. Would that be something that you've experienced firsthand?
Yeah, we're, we're installing a certain, it was called PTC up the railroad. But we found out that we were getting these cables for the, for this PTC. And they were 50 foot long. And we're doing the installation of these things. And we're only using 10 to 12 feet at the most. And so we went about, I did, and went to see how much we were paying for these cables. And it was an unreal amount. And all the cable was, was two, two wires and a plug. And we could make them for a tenth of what we were getting charged. And when we brought it to their attention, they, the company that was selling it to us, to them, said that they could have that cable for free as long as they keep buying the, you know, the rest of the product. So it was just, and when you're doing your own, your own construction, I think there's a lot of ways that you see, that you can, well, at least for me, I, I saw a lot of ways that I could make things or make other things work other than buying that specific deal.
Right. So you took the, you were proactive. You took the initiative. To challenge that, so to speak. Thank you.
Corey, based on what you know about this position, if you were selected, what would be a potential 30, 60, 90-day plan for you? What would be, on top of that, maybe some long-term goals that you would have for this department as the one overseeing it?
I would like to just, I guess, go over with some of the, that's already been here and just overlook the grounds and see. And I would like to beautify the, the grounds, I think, a little bit more. Just, I guess I haven't overseen the grounds yet much or what I'd be in charge of. But I think there's always, always chance for, or there for growth of seeing things or advancement of, I don't know what I would say. To be able to beautify things more, I think, and make things look nicer.
Chris, are you okay? Chris, you okay?
Okay.
Joe, we're going to come back around to you. Does somebody else have one they want to ask?
I do.
Please.
And we do not have to stick to what's on this paper.
No, this is just a, a pool of questions.
Okay.
Just.
Are you, do you want your turn back?
Please take it.
We, we do only have a couple.
Be in mind, we got three minutes left, bro.
So I'm sure you understand when you accept the responsibility of grounds, that storms happen in the middle of the night frequently. How flexible are you? And are you willing to respond to the needs of the county? And all of our properties, we're pretty spread out. Any time of the night, day, weekend, holiday, if necessary?
Yes, I worked midnights out there for 10 years. So I don't have any problem working, getting up and working at night or, you know, if it needed to be. And I, just me and my wife now, so I don't have kids to watch over or take care of. So I am flexible anytime.
Good answer. Thank you.
Joe, we'll go back to you, sir.
No, sir, thank you. Can't she answer my question, so?
That was, that was a good question. I'm glad you asked that. I can't think of anything.
Christopher.
I'm good, but I had the luxury of having a whole nother interview with this gentleman myself.
So did I, so I'm not going to. We've got a few minutes here. Could you, Corey, could you just tell us, understanding this is a supervisory position as well as get your hands dirty as well, Joe? Tell us about what you envision future for yourself if you were to be put in this position?
Yeah, I would be very happy with it. I see myself being, sticking around here for at least 10 to 15 more years in the community. And I would just love to have, or be a part, be known as a part of the, you know, my job and not just the groundskeeper or that. I would want people to know me. And I just want to see people proud of the courthouse and all around North Flack. I'm happy to see it grow. And I just hope that it keeps growing.
That sounds good. Thank you, sir. Colleagues, we had set this up for 30-minute interviews, maybe 10 minutes we talk amongst ourselves. Maybe we don't take.
Collect thoughts.
Maybe we don't take the full 10 minutes. But is that the format we want to stay with?
For me?
Okay. Corey, we thank you for your time today and.
We'll be in touch.
We'll be in touch.
Thank you very much.
Our people will get a hold of your people.
Thank you again, Corey.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Chris, I'm going to, since you and I were part of the initial interview process, I'm going to let you kind of be the collect thoughts here.
Okay. Corey brings a lot of good experience to the table. He's got a diverse background. You know, it's something to be said that he did serve his country. I think that's something that has to be kept in mind in this deliberation process. There's a reason why the three candidates that are before us today are before us today. And that's because in our initial conversation with them, we gleaned that they would be, all three of them could potentially be a strong asset to the county and to the taxpayers and do a good job doing this. So I appreciate you asking the question that you did about potential areas that you could see improvement on. It's something to be in that seat and going through this process. Sitting in, in front of the board can be pretty intimidating. But hopefully nobody takes that away from him. Because he, he readily admits that his ability to articulate his thoughts is probably not his, his strongest suit. But I think he did a great job. What do you guys?
Joe, I'd like, we're going to slip around to your end of the table.
I had a couple of strong points. He's level-headed. Think he's a hard worker. Unlike me, he stops and thinks before he speaks. That's important.
Valuable.
Somebody write that down.
He's a good listener, and I think he has a lot of the attributes of a road superintendent who was hired here in the last year or so. When you think about the interview and, and some of those things and listening to people and working with people, I found those to be his strong points. And that's mine.
Get your, get your $20 out.
Okay, Ken, we're going to slip back over to you. Tell me, tell me, tell us a little bit what we thought was positive and negative.
I had, I, I think Joe makes good points, very good points. Level-headed. And it is hard to get in front of folks and visit, interview. It's not a fun process. So you have to measure that a little bit. And, and I do. I think, I, I don't hold that against him as a candidate at all. I, I think I get the impression, and you two probably have a much better insight, but get the impression on a one-on-one with, with staff, he would be a lot more effective and a lot more vocal than we got today, right?
That's the other point I had, now, thank you. I put, I put that as a nine plus because not, you know, share his thoughts, get a dialogue. But if something has to happen, it can happen. Thank you, and I didn't mention it.
Commissioner Wheeler?
For me, actions speak louder than words, always. Even a one-on-one interview, I never took their reaction time and their ability to communicate their thoughts too seriously. While it's important when you're dealing with groups of people, for me, looking at his resume, he has all the skills we're looking for. And I agree with Chris, the fact that he's a veteran speaks to a guy's character. I also like that he spoke to wanting to be part of our community. And that tells me that he cares greatly about the work that he does, which would probably translate into he'd take good care of his work group and, and the people that he's working with and our property. So Corey's pretty high up on my list.
Okay. I agree. So anything else we want to discuss before I bring the next candidate in? Is it okay with you, we bring in the next candidate in? Is it okay with you, we bring in the next candidate in?
Was it in your packet?
Oh.
I don't think so. Unless I. Oh, you buried it in the bag.
Who's next? Jay.
I'm feeling great. You're invited to the hot.
Good morning.
We are a bit behind schedule, but you're gonna get your full thirty-minute timeframe. So, let's make sure you're aware of that. Jay, I want to congratulate you because you made our top three list when we did the initial interviews.
Thank you.
We appreciated your interest. I really thought you had a great deal to offer if you were chosen for this position. So, with that, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna let Commissioner Brunz begin the questioning, and then we'll just grill you from around the table. How's that sound for you? We're gonna start at eleven oh one, and I'll give you thirty minutes. So, Chris, start it off, please.
Okay. Jay, again, congratulations for being here with us today. We look forward to continuing this conversation here. We do have a pool of questions that the commissioners can pick and choose from. They may have some other questions as follow-ups. That is absolutely their prerogative as we, we do our deliberations. But we've all had a chance to review your resume that you submitted to us. Commissioner Woodruff and I have the unique privilege of having an initial conversation with you. So, we'll probably have probably more questions coming from the other three that haven't had that conversation. But why don't you take a moment to tell us about yourself? Describe your background, your experiences, if you would. And in particular, would have been the areas of emphasis that qualify you for this position, the Building and Grounds Director?
Sure. I grew up in Stapleton, and spent thirty-six years in eastern Nebraska, living near Omaha, Lincoln, that area. During that time, I've done everything from, I was mechanical and electrical engineering for ten years. I worked as ZEP, but I did not have an engineering degree. When my boss was an engineer, I did not need to have a degree at that point. I did have a drafting degree. After that, I worked for an oil company as a demand planner, which is forecasting fifteen hundred plus or minus finished packaged goods, plus bulked fluids, which were sold to, directly to customers. And after that, I worked in, as a commercial property manager for LS Waters. And in that role, we managed, I did everything from keeping the books on the company to down in the trenches, so to speak, doing sheet rock work, repairing after tenants would move out. It was kind of a, it was a very hands-on job. We did everything. And it was very, a small company, it was actually handed down through my wife's family, and my wife inherited the company. And I wound up working for my wife. And I recently moved back in May to be home.
Okay. Commissioner Hugley, I'm gonna let you ask a question of Jay, please.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Sort of the, one of the paramount questions, but why do you want to be the Buildings and Grounds Director? And what do you think sets you apart? Can you kind of explain why you would be an asset to this county? And what makes you different, maybe from some of the other candidates that you might know of?
Part of it is I grew up back here. I don't know if the other candidates did or not. The experience I have, my dad, prior to taking over the family farm in nineteen eighty-four, he owned the plumbing, heating, and air conditioning business. It was a one-man show. So, I have experience in that. And I also worked in that for LS Waters, my wife's company, in continuing to do that sort of work and maintain the buildings. And the buildings I maintained, we brought the condition of them up during my watch, so to speak. They weren't in bad condition, but we improved them and made them a little more maintenance-free as we could. But my background with the plumbing, heating, and air, and with the engineering work, I led to a lot of construction work that I did too. And I think I could benefit this county in maintaining the buildings and improving the buildings.
Didn't get a better answer than that?
No.
Commissioner Huler.
Jay, tell us, give us an example of when you set expectations with a work group and then had to monitor their progress? And maybe what you do to motivate your work groups and hold them accountable?
Okay. I did not have direct reports at the time, but I might answer this in two different examples. For LS Waters, we did a major project on one of the buildings that we had recently purchased in 2014. We had the front and the end removed from the building. And it was the street frontage for the major streets that it, that it bordered, it was on a corner. And we selected the bidders for that, and we went through the whole bidding process, selecting a general contractor. He selected his subs. And I was overseeing the project for LS Waters. In that, I was the point of contact for that. My wife had a full-time job at the time while I was doing the LS Waters business. And I was overseeing the project. I was on-site a lot, checking things over. They, of course, when you open a wall, you run into things you didn't expect, and a lot of questions. And they were calling all the time and saying, hey, we need to look at this. What are we gonna do? So, I was overseeing that as project manager, representing the company. And as far as direct reports, it does not show on my resume. But I worked for Inter Systems where I was an engineer. I worked for them in ninety-three and ninety-four in the shops. It rolls back a little bit. I worked on night shift. I was night shift manager part of the time. They had a hard time keeping night shift managers, and they kept using me as the fill-in in between. They literally had some that would stay a week and some that would stay a month, but they kept using me as, as the interim. They never did award me that position, but I had almost the pay of it and the responsibility of it. And during that time, my job was to line out everyone during the, for the evening shift. In that, I would come in early to meet with the first shift managers, find out what we needed to work on, what we needed to do, and determine with them, who do we need to put on each project? What's, what's hot? What do we really need to get done tonight? What do we have a little more time on, set priorities?
Okay.
Good, yes, good answer.
Commissioner Williams, I'll let you ask.
Okay, thank you. So, Jay, just so everybody knows, we know, we've known each other, pretty much our whole lives, right?
Long time.
I know your, I know your mom, and I tolerate your dad. That's a joke. Great people, great people. Okay, so you mentioned HVAC. I'm gonna jump back to that for a minute. Do you have a lot of time in HVAC?
A little bit. I do not have a Freon license, and I do not have Freon to anything except cars.
So, it'd be trouble shot HVAC.
I have. Rarely, rarely at our house in Louisville, did we have a service call on anything. I did appliance repair. The few times we did have HVAC, it was to add Freon, and I already would know that it was low on Freon. I did some repair work on our own air conditioners occasionally, like a capacitor would be out. The run capacitor was out once, and I troubleshooted out. Furnace, I did all of our own troubleshooting and work on our furnace when, when necessary. But Freon, I can't add it. I, I don't have the training.
Yeah, that's fine. I didn't want necessarily get into the weeds. I just, HVAC jumped out because we have a lot of HVAC issues. So, I'm gonna jump down here. Just stay a little bit with the format. The, this, the question was posed before and will be again to our third candidate about balancing cooperation with others and otherwise monitoring or harnessing independent thinking. I put, that's my word, harnessing. Give me an example of how you've had that as a practical experience managing, say, another individual on your staff or something as far. You know, you want people to, they were, you want them to be proactive, but at the same time, you want to make sure that you're getting cooperation, not somebody out in the weeds, so, right?
Right.
So, can you talk to that, how you balance that cooperation with folks that might have a pretty independent streak? It would work for you.
There are many ways to accomplish most tasks. There are the occasions where there's one way to do it, and that's the only way to do it. But often, there are many ways to accomplish a task. And no one is frankly that smart. All of us are smarter than any one of us generally. And that you need the cooperation of the people, but they need input into it too. Like, that's why you have a committee here, rather than one person running the county. It's a large county. You have different districts and, you know, how this works. But you need input from everyone, because someone might bring a piece of the puzzle. They might bring the entire puzzle to, to the table. And you need to incorporate that and consider everything. And leadership is more, you're not telling them what to do. It's, you're keeping everyone on task, including yourself, in that you're working together as a team to accomplish a common goal. As an example of that, my boss in engineering, I worked for one man, and I was his employee for ten years. Occasionally, he would have a second or a third employee, usually they were part-time. But he and I collaborated together on a lot of projects in that we were designing custom machines that fit in custom applications. And sometimes he would come to me, or I would come to him and say, I need another set of eyes to look at this. What are we doing here? What am I missing? How can we do this better? And even though he was my boss, we worked more together in those instances as collaborating. And there were a few projects we did entirely together from start to finish, but a lot of them, we would collaborate in that way. It's like, what am I missing? And he was still the boss, but in that point, we were more equals in that. Because he heard me out, and we accomplished solutions together to a lot of those.
So, that would be your approach with your staff?
It would be.
Thank you.
Chris.
Based on what you know about this position, Jay, what would you be a potential, should you be selected? Thirty, sixty, ninety-day plan? And even then, maybe some long-term goals for the department?
First plan would be get familiar with the buildings and the people here, to meet them, to learn their strengths. Everyone has things they're better at than others, to learn their strengths, their weaknesses, to get to know the personalities of it. To learn, what's the record-keeping on the building? What is our, our budget? What do we have in place for preventing maintenance? I mean, how often are filters changed in, on the HVAC units? Is it effective? Are they coming out filthy? Does it need to be increased, decreased? What can be done? Look at costs. Along with that, what is, what are you spending a month or a year seasonally on different items like filter changes? Or snow removal, I can't write, snow removal very well in Nebraska, certainly not this year. But taking a look at that and seeing how, getting familiar with it, and then start looking at some longer-term goals. As far as long-term goals, like ten-year, I do not know at this point. I'd have to go through the budget and look at the condition of the buildings. And talking with the staff, both people who work in the courthouse, what's going on? What do you see consistently? And also the staff who maintains these buildings, to really determine that. So, I think that's kind of a little bit of an ambiguous answer, but I, like the ten-year plan, I really can't answer at this point until I see what needs to be done.
It's an adequate response.
Uh, Joe?
It's sort of a hybrid. Can you talk a little bit about, I know you talked about when you're a mechanical draftsman and so, you know, small, one-on-one kind of an operation, same way with your, some of your others. Talk to me about any experience that you may have supervising two, three, four, five other people, if that, if you have. And if so, what was your sort, what do you describe as your management style? Okay?
Okay, that would go back to Inter Systems when I worked night shift in the shop. I was in, it was manufacturing. We didn't have an assembly line. It was kind of a one-of-job shop type thing. I was in fabrication, actually, which is punch press, you know, forming, rolling metal. It was shaping it so they could put it together in the welding shop and paint shop. There were up to maybe sixteen at the most. There was high turnover on night shift. But management style is kind of, you point people in the direction, and if they're going and doing it, hopefully if they run into problems, they come to you. But if you have good people, you don't need to be over their shoulder. I mean, I don't appreciate that myself, and few people do work well that way. But there are the occasional few that you need to keep an eye on. You need to kind of keep track of where, where they are, what they're doing. And maybe, maybe they're in a project that might challenge them. So, you kind of need to keep an eye on them to make sure that they are gonna succeed, and we don't have to tear it apart and rebuild it. So, in that respect, it's kind of a, leave them alone. If they're doing the job and doing well, if they need something, know that they can come and that, you know, I'll stop, I'll help them, whatever we need to do to, to answer the question or to figure out why, in that case, why it's not going together. What do we need to, how do we fix it? And possibly even pull in another person to look at it too. Another set of eyes can really help.
Thank you.
Kayla.
This position will have a lot of responsibilities, but one of the most important responsibilities is dealing with our budget. Can you tell us your experience of helping build a budget and then adhering to it? Again, we are a large facility spread all over the county, but being conservative with the county's money is a top priority. So, in your past experience, have you dealt with that?
I have, actually. And the county, yes, you are responsible for the constituents' money, I mean, the taxpayers' money. With LS Waters, we purchased a building in Lincoln in 2014. And that was the building I was talking about, we tore the front and the end off of and rebuilt. It was a project building when we bought it. And when you buy a commercial property, you're not just buying a piece of property, you're buying an income stream. So, you have to go through the leases. You have to look at when they expire, how are the tenants? Get whatever you can from the previous owner's books or current owners, in that you haven't purchased it yet. So, you're going through the books to really determine, okay, is it truly making money? And how much is it making? And then you look at the expenses of the building to see where they are. And of course, a walk around and a walk through the building, you determine how have they been doing with this? How have they been maintaining? And get some idea. And when we purchased that building, we knew what it made. But we did not know for sure really what the expenses were going to be. The bookwork was a little vague. So, we set a tentative budget on that and tried to adhere to it, but knowing we had to put a lot of Band-Aids on the building to get it through the winter until we could redo it the next year. And we started the process immediately on selecting contractors. But we put together a budget. We used what was called a triple-net lease, which is very common in eastern Nebraska. You're familiar with them. And on a new property, it's kind of a shot in the dark sometimes. It's like, okay, where is it really? But we kept developing it more and getting better at it. And our triple-net ran a lot lower. We did have one property, which was partially managed by an outside firm. And our triple-net's on the building we fully managed was about two dollars and fifty cents per square foot cheaper than the others. We kept our expenses down partly by my work, but a lot of it was, maybe we were a little better at it, maybe we were just lucky. I don't know. But it was effective.
So, you're, you're used to dealing with finances and balancing books and staying within a project?
I kept the books on LS Waters, yes.
Very good, thank you.
Commissioner Williams.
I'm gonna jump down to my favorite buzz phrase, maximizing efficiencies. Because Chris told it from me.
I literally put the question in there for you.
I know. This is for Jay's benefit. He was in the hall. Okay. You kind of touched on here with, what you spoke with Commissioner Hugley and Huler about managing budgets and so forth. But because it is taxpayer-run, as you said, you know, we are always looking to be more efficient, maximizing efficiency. It's not just a buzz phrase. It's really the way we look at things. Do you have any specific, or maybe recall's difficult, short-term, but short notice, but in your past experiences, have you had any processes where you recognized things were inefficient, and then you corrected them on your own, or took the initiative to, to make them more efficient? As far as the monies you had to utilize? If, you know, and it's not, and I don't want to over, overcomplicate it, simply as a matter of fact, if in your past experience with work and managing monies, have, have you had experience directly that where you recognized something that was woefully inadequate or inefficient? You corrected it, or took the initiative to see that it was?
Whether it be a system or anything.
Thank you, yeah.
We did take over at LS Waters. In every lease, we inherited leases with the Lincoln property. It was up to the tenants to change furnace filters. That's the most basic maintenance you can do on an HVA system, is change the filters. If it can't breathe, it's not running efficiently, it's not going to last as long, it's wear and tear on the unit. Tenants are usually not very good at doing that on a regular basis, if at all. Tenants are usually not very good at doing that on a regular basis, if at all. So we took that over, even though it was written into the lease, we just took that over and started changing them quarterly. There was one bay, we changed them every six weeks because just the nature of their business, for some reason, they could plug up furnace filters like you wouldn't believe. But it's really protecting our investment because we own the furnaces and air conditioners. Even though they paid for the maintenance on them, we paid it out of pocket upfront and billed it back to them. But it was preserving our units that we owned, you know, getting more longevity out of them.
Chris. Yeah, so, I mean, in this position, as a department head in particular, should you be selected, you're going to have to work with a lot of different departments, you're going to have to work with a lot of external agencies, contractors. Share an experience in which coordinating activities with other departments helped you to ensure that services were provided in a timely manner, if you would please?
That would go back to Ellis Waters property management. We would have some construction projects where we would bring in, you know, I'd bring in a plumber, heating and air conditioning person, contractor. I didn't do all the contracting work. If we had a quick turnaround on a commercial bay, like someone comes in and they want an office added into a corner. If it's a two-week turnaround, I would not handle that myself. I would bring in people to do that. Sometimes I would do the electrical work, sometimes I'd do the plumbing, but I would bring in others who had more time to devote to, because I also had other properties to manage. And I would bring them in and coordinating their schedules as much as I could with them, work with them to get our job done, what we need done, but they can also do their, their other projects too. So it was, I guess, project overseeing it, even though I was doing part of the work myself often.
And since last time you passed, so I went to, you're, you're behind her this time, so McKenna, you're next. Thank you. I'm trying to help.
Thank you. Give him a little more time. Jay, as the head of our building and grounds, we have emergency situations. You can be called to address a problem or an issue nights, weekends. It seems like as nature goes, things don't always happen during set work hours.
True.
How flexible are you? Are you available to respond to emergencies that we may have outside of the normal working hours?
Yes, I was the call person for Ellis Waters and I did not have a backup.
It was all you, huh?
It was all me, yes. I have received a phone call at 10 o'clock at night from a tenant in Lincoln, and I live 20 miles south of Omaha, saying, we have water running under the wall, should that be happening? On my way.
Good answer, thank you.
Joe, you're up next.
Talk to us a little bit about what experiences, if any, you've had with people working under you as far as needing, you know, discipline? How do you discipline? When, why do you discipline? And have you ever had to dismiss anybody? Talk to me about just your management, maybe experiences with people as it deals with personnel and maybe a little bit about what your management style might be.
On night shift at Inter Systems, I did not have a disciplinary authority, not being the manager. And even then, they managed, they limited that and they liked to handle that during the day shift with the plant manager. We did have, two employees got into a very heated argument one night that we had to step, I had to step into the middle of. And another, another trusted and known employee followed me into that, thankfully. It was just separate them and hey, go have a cup of coffee, go cool down, go take a walk, come back later, you know, and let's, let's get this resolved so we all have a good night and you two can get back to what you're doing and get along. As far as firing, I have had to fire contractors in the past, sometimes in the middle of a project. It just was not working and there was one case, they were not paying, we were paying the general contractor, but he was not paying the sub, so liens were showing up, being filed on the building. And that didn't set too well with us, so we had a few.
Was, was this during construction or post-construction?
During.
Okay. So on your monthly payouts?
Yeah, yeah, we were paying the general contractor and he was, we assumed using the money for other contract, for other projects. He wasn't keeping it within our contract. That was a learning experience.
Okay, I'm going to ask a question this time through, Jay. You've outlined quite a number of strong points. Would you tell us if there was, if there is a weakness that you would like to see yourself improve on or is there something that you could do better? What would that be?
Personal or professional?
Both, either.
I did open that, didn't I?
Basically, well, personal involves your work and the people around you, so yeah, whatever.
It does, it does. Hmm, that's a good question. Personal side, there are a lot of things I've been working on in my life, having recently gone through a divorce. Just put that out there. It does not affect job employment in any way, shape or form. That's how I am not working at Ellis Waters. When you work for your wife and she wants a divorce, you kind of lose your job quickly, so, and suddenly. But there are a lot of things through that that I have been doing homework on me. I've been putting in the work on me and there are still areas of my life that I'm not satisfied with where I'm at yet. And I want to continually improve on all of them and live, live my life deliberately. Not just let it happen, but look, having goals and moving toward them. And of course, the goals shifted considerably when we got divorced. So that's on the personal side, what I'm, what I'm working with and what I'm working on is just continue to put in homework on me, to invest in me and to move forward with that. On the professional side, weaknesses? To continue to learn and grow and go forward. Since moving out here, I haven't been working in what I would consider profession, professional-type capacity. Since moving out here, granted, I worked for Miller Repair and the parts person is professional, but that was not my profession, not one I would have been in before, so I don't really count that. And working for Schaefer's, it was fun. And it, it was good for me to do that, it kind of revisiting my youth, so to speak. But same time, it wasn't, it wasn't meeting long-term goals that I have for myself. And also professionally, I would like to, to be in a job that I would want to stay in and where my employers would want to keep me until retirement. And continue to learn and grow in that capacity, but also to, you know, to, there's new skills to learn and improve upon the skills that I have.
Thank you, sir.
Are you still currently working for Schaefer's?
I am not. No, I left January 16th.
Thank you. Okay, in the last two, three minutes, I'll let you two gentlemen pass it out and ask Jay another question or two.
Do you have something else you wanted to add?
Unless you do.
No, I was, I was ready to ask for kind of a summation.
Yeah, that's, I was.
Number fifteen, so. Appreciate the conversation today, I appreciate getting to know you. Is there anything else that you would like to add to this conversation that maybe wasn't brought up? But that you feel will help us know you better and your experience better?
I think we've covered a lot of ground, honestly, in our conversation a couple of weeks ago and here this morning. And I'm sure, I'm sure that all of you have talked in the meantime since our, our first initial meeting. I don't know, is there anything else that anyone would like to know? I'm not sure I could add anything to it at this point.
Joe, you can sure to think of something. No, the only thing I was going to say is when they asked me that same question about, are there any things you would like to work on professionally and in your own life to, to improve things? They had to shut me off after about a 10-minute, you know, I just, I had a lot of things. So I appreciate that, that there was some hesitancy. Tells a lot about your character.
Okay, does anybody else have a question they'd like to?
I don't have a question, but I, I would like to tell you, I have been to your parts counter at Miller Repair. And as, my husband tends to send me, the person who's not working on the equipment to get parts, I always appreciated your willingness to listen to me describe things as thingamajiggies and deli kebabs.
Did we meet? Did you and I meet?
Yes.
We did, okay.
And I always felt like you did a great job in helping me through the process and, and treating me well during that experience. And that's a good quality to bring when you're dealing with people in a large organization also. So I appreciated your service at Miller Repair.
Okay, well, there's a, there's a plug that you didn't give.
Right.
Okay, that brings us to 30 minutes. And again, Jay, I, I really appreciate you taking time to be with us for this second interview. And it's been great to have some discussion. So what I'll do is we'll, we'll kind of just kick a few things around amongst ourselves and.
We'll be in touch.
Thank you. Our people will be in touch, your people.
I don't have many people right now.
Okay, we'll be in touch.
I thank each of you for the opportunity and for your time. Thank you.
Thanks, Jay.
Okay. Colleagues. Chris.
Could be a hard decision. It's going to be a really hard decision.
We thought that two weeks ago.
Obviously, I mean, well-spoken, articulate, he's got, brings the experience that we're looking for. I think that's one thing that we'll find with all three candidates, they all have the experience that we're looking for. It's just, it's going to be tough.
Okay, Kayla, tell me what, some of your.
I, I agree. I mean, I thought I had a pretty, I knew it was going to be tough just by looking at the paperwork that came with these applications. I mean, it is going to be hard, they all bring a lot of good things to the table. I do like, as far as Jay goes, he is a strong communicator, which I think is, is important. Not necessarily for the interview process, but for communicating with large groups of people and your contractors. And I, I appreciated his honesty, so, hard decision.
Karen.
Well, I do have some bias because I've known him since he was a young man, young lad.
He doesn't hold that against you.
No, he doesn't, he doesn't seem to, although he'll probably hold that back the time being. I do know his family, I've known him my entire life. So I'm a little biased there because I know he's got a good disposition, I just, I knew, I saw him grow up.
That's not a bad thing either, it's good to have that knowledge.
No, it's true, but at, at any rate, it is going to be tough and I'm going to be as subjective as possible. And that will not be my sway, the fact that I've known him. But I, it does bring me comfort that I think he's, he's of good character there, so.
Joe.
You appear to be honest. It's, it's difficult to judge what you get in a person by a few minutes sitting around a table answering questions, as we all know. I mean, we've all interviewed before, we've all had good and bad experiences, that's, that's the way it is. That's all.
Anything else?
I might add that the experience with drafting blueprints, electrical, HVAC, plumbing, if not having hands in there himself overseeing those that did, that's pretty strong positive attributes.
I would agree.
And I think that was one of our hopes through this interview process, that we would bring some skills to that department so we wouldn't have to contract so much stuff out. And he, I mean, having electrical, plumbing, HVAC, not to mention, you know, being able to read blueprints and communicate with contractors. So lots, lots of good qualities there, a lot, great skill set.
And back to the canvas, the candidness, see?
Yes.
He didn't overstate that. And I noted that, he didn't overstate that.
Yeah, pretty humble.
Well, got a little bit, but I don't have a degree and so forth. To your point, I agree, that's.
Anything else?
Good asset. Take a couple of minutes and collect thoughts and use the facilities.
Yeah, why don't we do that? Let's, evidently you want to have a cup of coffee.
I do.
Okay, so we will, let's get back here in two minutes, huh? Speaking about being in the hot seat there, I was in front of three ladies, one who's leaving the room right now. And they didn't hold it against me. You know, it's.
Okay, Pammy has left the room, I'm turning down the heat. It's 75 degrees in here. Oh no, she caught me. It actually is a little warm in here. It's 75.
Difficult.
We had each of our. We could trim it down, take it out. Spokes is just working, he's right, applying for the right job. But we came down to six.
You had how many?
We had 18, we trimmed it down to six for.
So could you just throw like 10 of them out?
Nothing.
No, yeah. Right, yeah.
We asked for six, the private one, it just had. But we asked. We narrowed it down to six.
I love that.
I know. It's just, I mean, this thing.
That's.
So it's.
But I tell you what, when we get onto a point that we think needs to be discussed.
It smells like you're making the same coffee. Smells like you're cooking the same. It's a fresh pot.
What do you got? Latter day, a little water?
Right.
We'll be with you in just a minute here. Be comfortable in the hot seat.
Who's this?
I don't like being comfortable in the hot seat.
Who's this guy?
Adjust the part in your hair, oh, you already have.
Oh yeah, I can take it from him though.
While we're waiting for Joe to come back.
I've been here fourteen years. Before that, I worked for Peaster Construction, building houses. I like my family, that's probably a positive thing. I love my kids. Main hobby is probably agriculture. I guess, if you're asking why I think I'm qualified for this job, it's because I went through fourteen years of this place in and out, and I've worked alongside not everybody. And if it's from doing cement work to plumbing, to new building, to demolition buildings, to building offices, I've done it. I think I understand, after some of our past history in building grounds and bosses, I've kind of learned whatnot to do, too. You know, I've witnessed some things that dang sure stood out to me never to do it. I've learned a lot of good things from a lot of people and had a lot of guidance from people. I focus, we've done so many things and I've had to deal with every single one of you in a separate way. I have literally been to Joe's office, asked him advice, because I wanted to make sure it was done right, before I went and get in trouble, the right way to proceed. I'm a pretty open book on that. I will ask a question if I don't know it. I do enjoy that you guys are open to answer them. But I guess I'm me, the good and the bad, I guess, you know? There's a few things about me I don't even like. So, and I guess you're not human if that ain't it, if you don't have that, so.
Okay. Joe, since you were mentioned there just a minute ago, you're up next. Do I have to do some kind of disclaimer or something? No, don't do that. I'm not gonna call you Mr. Boyer, I'm gonna call you Booker.
Okay.
Remember one, why do you, why do you want to be the building and grounds director? And what do you think sets you aside from the other candidates, maybe? Explain a little bit why, one or two points that you think would make you a key asset to this group of ours.
Because I care for this county. I've cared fourteen years now. I've been on call twenty-four seven for fourteen years. I enjoy the people I work with. I've built relationships with them over the years. I care if we're successful. And honestly, I don't like letting you guys down, or the sheriff, or anybody else want to be as efficient as possible. Sometimes I worry about it too much. I've been sat on the hallway for about half hour thinking the same thing, so. I think that the staff we have now, I'm super good with, have relationships with them. I understand that they're people, not just employees. I understand that the county, we have to do what's best for the county as our employees for the county. So I understand that if we have to reprimand, we will for the right reasons. We don't need to get carried away. There's two sides to every story. I want to make sure that they're not worried about their job, that they're doing the right things. I want to make it a better work environment for all of us.
Thank you.
And there's one more thing, sorry, Joe.
I'm sorry?
I didn't start this out as a job. I started out this when I was twenty-one years old. I started it out as a career. You know, it wasn't like, hey, I didn't like this, so I'll go to the next place down the street. I want to, I don't know if this sounds arrogant, but I'd like to finish it out there, all the way through.
Thank you, Booker. Commissioner Woodrow.
Booker, I'll call you Mr. Boyer all day long.
Yes, ma'am.
Give us an example of when you had to set expectations and then monitor progress and performance of subordinates.
Well, I just went through it yesterday. I'll be real honest with you. We had a little, a few parts, some painting, and we were trying to clean that up. So, well, not yesterday, but Friday, so we spent all day Friday trying to clean up some paint. I'm not necessarily, we had, sometimes fast is not good. You know, I think that was in the mindset of let's hurry, hurry, get through it, but doing it right, we wouldn't be in the position we are right now. So, when I get out of this interview, I'm gonna go fix a few mistakes that we ran into. There was no reason to holler at anybody about it. It was more a sit-down like, hey, you know, I know Drum looks big and bad, but he wants it done right. Fast might be important, you might think that's impressive, but he wants it done correctly. It's more important to him. And I had to talk to two inmates and one staff member about that. You know, because I was kind of blindsided by it. I didn't quite know what was going on, but I figured out what was going on in a hurry.
And actually, there were, there was more to that question, but you addressed those in your initial answer, so I've got nothing else.
Kent.
I'm gonna jump forward here. I just love this phrase, maximizing efficiencies, Booker.
Thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Commissioner Brunns.
I do, he do.
I've asked everybody this question. I'm jumping up to this one. We talk about it, you know, we're jesting about it a little bit today, but that's really what we're all about. We work for the purpose, we try to be as efficient as possible, maximize the dollar, right?
Yes, sir.
So, with that, and you already know this is an emphasis of this board, and certainly prior to me being on this board, you got a full dose out from Joe, because he's the same way. So, anyway, can you tell us, can you define that in a, you know, in a operation, a daily event, or ongoing, or just singular time when you recognized, this is really inefficient, and I'm gonna fix it, and I'm gonna take the initiative?
That's why I'm here today, Kent. I'm trying to sign up with this. I had a great boss, which I figured, great guy. You ain't gonna find a better person in the world. The problem I had, and it wasn't his fault, because it was his background, he worked for Red Cross, and was a meat cutter. So, if I come here today and get this position and hire somebody with skills underneath us, as we've been asked in our office for the last year and a half, we needed more employees. If I can hire one more person with mechanical, hopefully plumbing is what I'm trying to find, if I get this position, skills, it'll cut back on service charge from snails, and it'll give us one more capable person that has skills in the maintenance and taking care of things.
So you recognize that as a deficiency that needs to be addressed?
Yeah, I, I...
To be more efficient.
Yeah. Have the right peoples in the right places, you know? That's, that's the key to this deal is, if I got four cylinders running, it's better than three, you know? I mean, I, I understand that there's gonna be claims, and I understand that they're supposed to be, on working on budget, but I understand that I'm not to be side to side with the employees, too, working, if we don't want a fifth maintenance person. And quite frankly, if I'm gonna be under the gun for getting in trouble or something, I want to be part of it. And if I'm the one overseeing it, I know that I gotta oversee them because that's me, that's on me. That's why I'm here today, is that question right there, I think it'd be more efficient.
Very good, thank you.
Chris.
Based on what you know about this position, should you be hired, what would be your thirty, sixty, ninety day plan? And then on top of that, what may be some potential long-term goals that you envision for the department?
My thirty day plan is hopefully ask you guys, hire a part-time janitor, because we are gonna run into a little bit of problems with health with one of our older janitors. And it's gonna be more focused on staffing and trying to get the right peoples in the right places, like I just talked about. I enjoy, and it just started in last month, month and a half, so, I like that Monday, five afternoon meeting that Michaela and I have. I like being open with you guys about it. I like being able to talk to you guys, what should be done about this situation, and what do you guys like first? Because I'm a lot of things, but I ain't a miner either. And that line of communication that we've been having is great. I can follow and do what you guys ask, but lines of communication. And that communication here lately has been awesome, and I wish we could do that once a week, all the time, and I hope we keep doing it. One of the first things, we got a bunch of stuff that we need to finish up. Around here, we got landscaping over at the jail. We got a sidewalk that's sinking in on the north side of New Edition, and I gotta figure out what we're gonna do with. We gotta go through and make sure we pass codes on some boilers upstairs. You know, it's gonna be small steps, but the right steps to make the right decisions, to complete projects and following through with them. My long-term plan, that we're more efficient on timing. We got the pick list that Dave with IT set up, that's been a huge help. Getting it from one person's been monstrous. We can go through every morning, you know, I walk in the door, Jeff Smith's like, hey, we got three things on the list, where should we start? Just having that foundation, other people running around, just doing stuff, not realizing what they needed to do, has been great. It's made our lives totally easier in our office. But I'd like to follow through with doing that, and hopefully Drum gets it set up on his computer, because I asked him last week, and he still doesn't have it for you to see.
That's on, that's on my list this week.
Okay.
Okay. It worked pretty good to go to Michaela next, so I think we'll do that again.
Booker.
Is it Booker or Mr. Boyer?
Mr. Boyer. Responsibilities of building a budget and adhering to the budget, you've worked for the county a long time. You understand the importance.
Yes.
I don't know about what level you have participated. Does working with a budget frighten you at all? Is it something that you're totally unfamiliar with?
No, it doesn't frighten me at all, working on the budget. The one thing about you guys' budget system and agriculture, you get paid once a year. So, I gotta manage my operating note at home, just like a budget here. And if I run out of money, there's nobody to go ask them for, I'm stuck there. I know that every dime counts, because it'll affect your life in the long run. I'll give you a prime example of that in my own personal life. I had to spend twenty thousand dollars in hay last year, because we didn't have no hay. Am I glad I skimped and didn't kind of go blowing any money? Yeah, real glad. Trying to read the future, pretty dang tough, you know? But there is some signs. I guess when I was putting up that hay and it wasn't making a windmill, it's a pretty good idea that I needed to watch out, because it was gonna get expensive. I think it's the same way here at the county. We have big projects, we have something come up surprisingly, which we do, and we have, they come up, and we can't be, with the money, we gotta be really tight, because, prime example, Salaport Door. I would like to get a new drum for the south side, it's not down yet, but it is. But I'm weighing out bills I didn't know about coming in, to see if I can do that, or if I can wait till budget time. Trying to pencil it out, figure it out, because I know we only have a set amount.
Joe. with the funds we have. Is there a better way to manage, in your mind, where I don't know how it came about, but, you know, small things, here at the courthouse, or, let's say, the jail? You know, changing filters is something that, you know, usually in the past, maintenance would do. But I notice we have, you know, we hire that done by, you know, HPAC companies, is there a better way to do that, or give me your input a little bit on that?
I'll reverse back six months ago, when this came out. I'm open to get up on that route, but my staff are not. If I went and tried to, let's say, if I got this position and I was hiring, I would try to find somebody that's capable of getting up there with me and doing it. I have, I didn't sign that deal, I didn't force it, I don't know how it really got started. I know that we're gonna have to have a lot of filters on hand, storage reasons, that's gonna be kind of a tight deal. For some reasons, that's a lot of the reasons why I think we went that route. I know the one, RTU five on the sheriff's office takes twenty-four filters, a twelve K, so, going quarterly, and then there's, I think, seven units altogether up there. So I think it was more of a storage thing when it was initially done. I'm not against it, it's just, I don't know why we ever went that way. It's been like that since we built the jail, Joel.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Kent, would you have another question, maybe?
Yeah, possibly. I talked to the others a little bit about, I didn't use the word self-motivation, but proactive, as far as monitoring what you do, being able to defend what you do, measure that, and also how that applies to staff that would answer to you. And I'll elaborate a little bit more than I did with them, and point out that, where you've got multi-layers of managers, quote unquote, and some people with hands in the pudding, it's always good to be able to justify what's going on, or not, correct?
Correct.
So talk, talk to us about, how's that look? How does Booker monitor Booker? And then how does Booker monitor the staff? And then when you get a challenge from one of us, or the public?
I'd have an answer.
Go ahead.
I think, you guys kind of helped me out there a little bit with the ticket system, because I know that I'm on a timeframe to get this stuff done. I think that helped my staff out, it was pretty black and white clear, this is what we gotta get done, this is high priority, this is medium priority, this is low priority. As it means a bunch of people coming at you and telling you stuff. Sometimes that gets kind of tricky in my position, I'll be honest with you through the years. I've made one commissioner mad, because I did what the other commissioner wanted me to do. That happens. I'm okay with that, I kind of got broad shoulders for it, you know? Being proactive, sometimes a little too proactive, I think. And I understand, and I try to understand your side of, you guys' side of philosophy. I got in a situation this winter that I didn't want to be in, but I thought I was doing the right thing, and I...
And also how that applies to staff that would answer to you. And I'll elaborate a little bit more than I did with them and point out that. Where you've got multi-layers of managers quote unquote, and some people with hands in the pudding. It's always good to be able to justify what's going on or not, correct?
Correct.
So talk, talk to us about, how's that look, how does Booker monitor Booker? And then how does Booker monitor the staff? And then when you get a challenge from one of us or the public.
Right, I have an answer.
Go ahead.
I think you guys kinda helped me out there a little bit with the ticket system. Because I know that I'm on a timeframe to get this stuff done. I think that helped my staff out, it was pretty black and white clear, this is what we gotta get done, this is high priority, this is medium priority, this is low priority. As it means a bunch of people coming at you and telling you stuff. Sometimes that gets kinda tricky in my position, I'll be honest with you through the years. I've made one commissioner mad because I did what the other commissioner wanted me to do. That happens, I'm okay with that, I kinda got broad shoulders for it, you know. Being proactive, sometimes a little too proactive, I think. And I understand and I try to understand your side of, you guys' side of philosophy, I got in a situation this winter that I didn't wanna be in. But I thought I was doing the right thing and I. I asked Jerome if we'd order that barrel spring and get them done because they weren't broke down yet. He was, had a very valid point, he goes, they're still working, why are we gonna pay for a new one, maybe they're just trying to sell springs. I understand that. So we stepped back a little bit on it and said, you know what, let's just wait and see until one goes down. Did Jerome and I know that COVID and the way shipping was gonna be and headaches of life the last three years turned out? No. But it's like everything's on a timeframe, everybody's wanting stuff done.
Let me, let me circle back a little bit. I'm looking for, I mean, we're all self-critical, right? So how do you, how do you create structure with that so that Booker stays on task and how, and then your staff accordingly stays on task? Meets goals, if we have goals. And then if you have to take the corrective action with the staff.
How would I approach that?
How's that look? But you know, again, back to staying on task.
Yes, sir. On staying on task, that's, I hate failure, I hate disappointing, it goes back to that. I don't like to disappoint any of you guys, I don't like to disappoint Jerome because we all know the reason. On that side. If I, the things I like. That I didn't understand about this job for a long time, when I was building houses, you had an end product. So it was always looking forward to the, to the next step. With the county, there's not really end product. You just keep maintaining, maintaining and you wanna keep it up to a certain level. Which Jerome was really good on the jail side with. I don't wanna disappoint him, you guys, I wanna get the job done. And if you say something to me, if you think I'm doing something wrong, yeah. Okay, I will try to fix it. That's what I'm gonna do. On my staff's side, I'm gonna like, hey, do you think we can do this better? And if they need help understanding what we're doing, I'll be beside them doing this. And if I got it, back to the reprimand part of that question. I'm not, I'm gonna ask, there's two sides to every story, I'm gonna see why it happened that way. I'm gonna ask him, did you know that this wasn't getting done? And I understand there's warnings before action. I do understand about the county's three strikes, I'm getting written reports, I understand all that. I think that yes, it needs to be done, I'm okay with doing it. Do I think that's the main part of my job? No, my main part of my job is making my team successful and getting the job done.
Okay, thank you. Chris. As you well know. The county has numerous departments. In this particular position. They work with external agencies, companies, contractors and all of the department heads and elected officials. Share an experience in which coordinating activities with other departments or external agencies helped you. Ensure that services were being provided in a timely manner.
I'm not saying something, she doesn't throw something at that back corner back there, it's pretty good. Tammy and I have went through the rig here before, once or twice in our careers together. We have the security, Tammy and I worked hand to hand with that, we did it. And we went through everything from setting up the security equipment, to setting up the program, to showing, asking you guys and showing you guys our ideas together. And got through it amazingly. Believe it or not. I think that no matter what you work with somebody, you got to, it's for the benefit for the county. You can't be little by bringing in different reasons of why you don't wanna work with somebody. I think I'm fine, I can, I can buck up and deal with anybody I need to deal with professionally. And work with them to get the job done, cause the end goal is is to better the county.
Booker, I have a question for you.
It's on how to grow hair, hopefully.
There is a big note. We just have a little wider part than most people have.
Yes, that's the only difference.
They're envious actually, but Booker, we've, we've gone through quite a number of your positive attributes and there are many, many of those. If there is something that you would consider a weakness of yours or something you'd like to improve upon, what would that be?
There's two things. I think I, I think I got it figured out on temperament to be tactful. I mean, honestly, that's one of my big ones, I'm kinda blunt once in a while. And the other thing is, is being more understanding where the peoples tell me what to do, where they're coming from. Sometimes as supervisors, as you guys know, I don't know why you guys are asking to do it this way. I caught myself doing it to my own kids the other day, just telling them to kinda shut up and do it type deal. I, I wanna explain it, I need to be better explaining to my staff too, like this is why they want this done this way, we gotta have this timeframe. And I wanna get better at it, because I'm kinda, I grew up where my dad said, go dig a hole. He went and dug a hole and then he pointed over there and said, go dig a hole, go dig a hole and no one pressed to ask me questions. Well, I think I need to explain. I need to explain the long-term goals of why we're doing this, for they understand it, for they don't feel like it's just pointless.
Thank you, sir. Joe, I'm gonna go to you, no, you have anything? Michaela?
I do, in, in an effort to be consistent with my questions. I've asked all of the applicants, this is not a nine to five job. It's, you know, you need to be on call, you started this conversation with explaining that you've spent fourteen years being on call for the county. But I, I just wanna be fair and consistent with my questions, so how do you feel about nine-one-one calls in the middle of the night? Saying that we need you at the courthouse or at the roads department or at probation?
Yeah, that's fine, I'm, I'm okay with that. I've been a little proactive a few years back, back to you. And we'll, we'll circle the wagons back to that about, a little bit about having another staff member go into some schooling. I'm fine with it, I just want, and my staff's fine with it, but we need to be kinda cross-trained. You know, everybody has great attributes, but we gotta cross-transfer, everybody knows a little bit of something about everything. I've been kinda promoting it, wanting to do it for years, but I was never in the position to be able to do that. But here in the last year, it's been getting better in my office. Jeff Smith's learning about taking out ballots, doing LEDs, he's learning. But I need somebody to cross-train a little bit more on the plumbing, on the lock scenario. There's just some things that we gotta get a handle on for, everybody knows how to do a little bit of it in case we get into a jam. If I get in a car wreck tomorrow, you guys ain't stuck.
Good answer, thank you.
You too, I'm gonna let you kinda do the summation, cause we've got about two, a couple minutes left.
Yeah, so Booker, appreciate the conversation today. Is there anything else that you would like to add to the conversation that maybe hasn't been brought up in, in any line of questioning? But that you feel will help us know you and your experience a little bit better as we, we deliberate our decision?
I think if, if any of you guys know me well, if you come up with a problem, I'm more willing to try to help you. If there's a problem, I try to help you fix it, that's my job, I understand that when people come with problems. You come and tell me one-on-one, I will work my dangest to try to get you to fix the problem, we're kinda running out a little bit on a probation building. We ran into some stuff in the past. You come one-on-one and say, hey, this is messed up, how are we gonna fix this Booker? I'm more than willing. I like the eye-to-eye and I like the open communication that this board has, I really appreciate that.
Well, I'll tell you what, we're right at thirty minutes, so. Booker, I thank you for coming in. Our people will be in touch with your people.
All right.
So.
Why don't I thank the people, all right. See ya, thank you guys.
Thanks Booker. Mr. Boyer. I'm gonna have to just keep calling you Mr. Boyer forever now, aren't I?
Okay. I think, Chris, I think our colleagues on this board understand the. How complicated their initial interviews were, we, we did come with a very top three though, I'm very confident of that. And colleagues. Talk about our third interview if you would. Joe, you got something to add?
I would just say that the strong points that I see are experience. Been there, done that. It's always nice for me personally, if nobody else, to hire within the ranks or promote within the ranks if, if possible. I, I appreciated his answer that I mean, good parts and the bad parts. I, I appreciated that answer. So I think he does care for the county. Points that I gave away.
Or Kent?
Well, I'd echo, echo Joe's point, he definitely has his heart in the, the job that he's doing. And I don't think there's any question, he would be wholeheartedly trying to do his best. The thing that I tried to get from all three. Is self-analysis on how they're critical of themselves and how they're critical of staff. And how important it is, in my view, to be able to be totally honest with yourself about the job you're doing. Before somebody else is. That's really important when you're working in front of the public. And so I was asking, and, and it didn't necessarily get a, you know, a clear-cut answer from anybody on this topic. But that was what I was seeking, was more definition about how, how am I gonna structure this? You know, I come in this building and I'm never disappointed with the cleanliness of the bathrooms. And I, and my wife has even commented, she hardly ever comes in this building, she said, incredible, the facility is well cared for. But it didn't just happen, I don't think, I don't think we just have that one person who's such a self-starter. And I could be wrong, maybe, maybe they're gonna retire, we'll find out. But I'm crediting, I, I've been crediting the entire supervisory process and all the staff. That's, somebody's paying attention to detail and somebody's got a checklist. Those are important if you, I mean, he said it, you know, as a host, there's not an end result, it's the same, I'm paraphrasing. Same thing every day, well, that's true, but in order for that to stay fresh, you gotta have, you've gotta provide focus, priority and measure it. And that's what I want out of whomever we take, and I don't know. I spent a little more time trying to get a, more of a detail there, but all three perhaps didn't give me what I wanted to hear there totally.
For me, Booker interviewed well, I was very pleased with how he interviewed. He has experience, I mean, he knows the jail inside and out, upside down. The courthouse, I think he's been a little less involved in, but just, he has the experience, he's proven himself. There, there are areas to work on for sure. But I feel like in my personal dealings with him, Booker is willing to sit down and talk things through. Try to help come up with a, a plan and, and executes it very well. In dealing with him on the probation building, he was all in from the very beginning, what can I do? How can we help? What can we do to lower the cost to the county on this project? And I think he's always looking for answers like that. I think there's a lot to be said for promoting from within when it is appropriate. For me, Booker has proven himself in a lot of areas. With that said, we have a lot of qualified, talented candidates to look at. And it's gonna be a hard decision, but it's my goal to make the best decision for the county and our property.
Chris. I agree, it's gonna be a hard decision. With regard to the interview that we just finished, he did interview well, a lot, a lot better than I thought.
Me too.
And, and I think he was honest with us as far as areas where he knows he needs to, to make improvements on and. I will say this, every conversation that I've had with Booker over the past couple of years has been, there's been some element of how can we do things better? And, and, and I appreciate that. And the last couple hires that we've, or appointments that we've had to make, we've gone outside of our organization. And typically when an organization goes outside for a key hire, it's because they wanna change course. From the path that they've been on. Or that there's a key element of experience that presents itself that is lacking in the organization as it stands prior to the hire. My opinion in hearing from these candidates, both in the initial and in here today. They all bring an element of experience that we're looking for. When I look at the building and grounds department, yeah, we're, we always are looking for continuous improvement, for maximizing and creating efficiencies. We're on that path, I don't know that there's a need to make major course correction, rudder correction in the way that that department is going. Because Kent's point, our facilities, they're in pretty good shape. They're clean, the grounds are kept, we've got a great staff. This one's gonna be hard, but we have an opportunity to promote from within on somebody that. Fourteen years loyal to the county. That's, that's something to be said.
Great, anyone else?
I might, if, if, if I may. It's always concerned me that we didn't have enough in-house talent for HVAC and other things. And I know it's hard to go out in the, in this market and, and take somebody away from that trade. But I think if there's, either by our requirement, moving forward to continuing education or candidates before us. I'm, it really troubles me that we can't troubleshoot more in-house and I really wanna see that get better. I really do, cause I, I do not like signing claims for repetitive things from, I'm not gonna name the offenders, but. Drives me out of my gourd.
And I do feel like Booker spoke to that when, when he said.
He did make that point, he recognizes. He does recognize that, so I don't know what, you know, where that disconnect has been historically. But I think we owe it to our efficiency to expect, raise the bar there as far as what we, if we. No matter how we go today, we, we need to require that people get a little bit more educational on some of these things that are not necessarily out of reach. Not asking for a two-year degree or whatever, but. A couple of these, well, all three of these people have a rudimentary knowledge of something key to what we do. Electricity, plumbing and HVAC, and some have combinations of it. So they're all gonna, they're all gonna bring something to the table because of that.
You know, I probably have done a poor job in communicating some of the problem solving. That our maintenance department has done since I've come on board here. But just two weeks ago, I got a phone call from a company who was asked to give us an estimate. That the, the heat had quit working in our maintenance shop. And I was a little taken aback by that, that's, that's what team players, our maintenance guys are. None of them were complaining that it was downright cold in their shop, they were just handling it, they were just dealing with it. So in, in the meantime, the head of our maintenance department had retired. And so I, I went to the shop and between Booker and Joel, they, they fixed it. I mean, the, the, the estimate to repair the system was ten thousand dollars. And they were like, well, we weren't really involved in this, but we'll look into it. And they came up with a solution and saved us $10,000, because those two came together, made some phone calls, tapped some resources of people they know in the industry, and got a new mortar put on the unit that we had in-house in storage, and fixed it. So, you know, there's probably a lot that we don't know about the work that they're doing.
Without a doubt.
That maybe we should get better at sharing. And some of the outside stuff that we do contract, you know, like Booker said, he wasn't always in on those decisions, but I think he's willing to explore some saving opportunities for us there. So.
Okay.
Do you mind if Sheriff Kramer's had the opportunity to sit down on all these interviews, and he works hand-in-hand with that large facility over across the way, Ben Breakfast, as you like to refer to it? I wouldn't mind getting the sheriff's thoughts on the conversation, not that he's able to make the decision, but I'd value his input.
I think he's trustworthy enough, we could have his comments.
If he'd be willing.
Would you come up, please? State your name, rank, no, just your name, dude.
I'm putting you on the spot, Sheriff.
Well, mine will be fairly simple. The candidates were pretty impressive, and as they started, I thought, this is going to be hard to beat, and this is going to be hard to beat. And then we concluded, and I know all the candidates, I've known Cory forever, I thought Cory's knowledge and goals were pretty shallow. I don't think the beautification is, it goes deeper than that. He didn't really get into internal and wanting to deal with buildings and complicated things. I don't need some flowers, I've got some inmates to take care of that, but anyway, but not to belittle him at all, but I just don't think he knows what he's getting into. Jay was, his knowledge is amazing. Some of it is above and beyond probably what we would need here, or above what our maintenance program already knows. We've built a new jail and put an addition on that jail with Booker right beside us every step of the way, so even though he doesn't have the degrees and he doesn't have his portfolio that he mentioned today, he's got it. I've watched every supervisor that Booker's worked for, and he's worked for a slug or two. So Booker has had to take a head position for many years, even though it wasn't his title, he accepted that. And I just, I think the program that Michaela has gotten put together, I don't think that is any different for productivity for Booker than it would be any head of a department. That's a, it's a good program to get people motivated, to keep them on task. I could use a little bit of that myself. So, I think with that in mind, I think, I think without that, Booker may have been a little more than most people as far as getting off track and losing direction, because I think he's got, he does have some other interests in life, as a lot of us do. So, I think that's going to make a world of difference in what he can accomplish. It doesn't matter what breaks, what you need, whether it's a high-dollar lock on a door, whether it's a showerhead, or whether it's something over here at the courthouse, he either knows where that part is, he knows where to buy it, or he knows who, that it's out of his realm, and he knows who to buy, who to contact to put it in and fix it. And he knows who's the highest priced in town, he knows who's the cheapest in town, he's known who's available, and who's going to mess it up when they show up. But as far as the top three, it kind of blew me away.
Well, we were very fortunate, we had some excellent applicants and.
Yeah, these were three of many.
Three of many, but these had, they clicked off more boxes than the others, and I'm very, I'm very pleased with how this process has gone to this point in time, and I feel as though amongst us here, we will, we've got as much information in front of us as we could have to make this choice, so I appreciate your input very much. So, anything else?
No.
Colleagues, what I'm going to suggest, and I'd like to have your opinions on, is we've got a piece of paper in front of us that gives us first, second, and third choices. I would like to have you fill that out, and then I would hand them to the county clerk. Assign maybe a number value to each one. Top choice gets three points, second choice gets two points, third choice gets one point. Add them up and see who has the most, the highest score. Does that make sense?
Probably a pretty good barometer. It's really tough to do, but you gotta start somewhere.
Is that, is that a reasonable way to approach this?
It's reasonable to me.
Okay. County clerk, I didn't check if you wanted to do that or not.
For the, Mr. Chairman, for the sake of transparency to the public, would it be who of us to have our rank order read out loud after?
Didn't bother me.
For the record? That way, it's not technically a secret ballot, if you will?
I don't think that's necessary, but what do you think?
I don't.
I say no.
I'm okay with divulging who I put in the top position.
I don't really care, whatever you say, Mr. Chairman, give it to me. I don't, it doesn't matter to anyone, I do. Tough choice, huh? And you've had two interviews.
Yeah.
It's, I mean, with all of the positions that we have filled in the last year and a half, we've had some great applicants and some quality candidates, and I like that it's a hard decision.
Yeah, there's good and bad to it.
Yep.
The good is, we've got some great people that wanted to be working with us. The bad part is, is that we have to pick one of them.
I guess one of my questions should have been, if you weren't selected today for the head of the department, would you be willing to join us? Because any one of those people would have been a great addition.
Yeah, exactly. All the dynamics change on a dime on math, so you don't know.
Yeah.
You have to wait till you smoke first before you, maybe you want to answer that question.
So, how's the math coming up over there?
The top candidate came out by one point more than Booker.
So, I liked the process we did here. Now, it's probably someone needs to make a motion and reflect that. And as the head of the Personnel Committee, Commissioner Brunz?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we select and appoint pending any kind of a background check, I don't know that that's necessary in this situation, he's passed it all, but Mr. Booker Boyer to be our next Building and Grounds Supervisor.
And as the Building and Grounds Committee member, I will second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion?
Do you have a rate of pay in there?
Oh, good. Good, thanks for that. Important topic.
Let's take this, let's take this, can we, Tyler, can we take this in two motions?
Do you have another appointment every year in two?
Okay, let's do, let's continue with all we got. Okay, any other discussion?
I don't have another thing, is it?
No.
Okay, roll call, please.
Brunz?
Aye.
Wulver?
Aye.
Aye.
Wings?
No.
Wurra?
Aye. Okay, we have an appointment to Building and Grounds Supervisor. Next motion, if you.
I, Mr. Chairman, I don't know, I'm just going to throw this out. I know on the consider action following orders, just didn't say what the action was. Did we have a range?
We do have a range that was.
Could we, could we ask the, which is not at all unusual, our committee, whether it's Personnel Committee, probably Personnel Committee, to sit down and negotiate a salary and bring back a recommendation to this board? It's not really on here to act on it. I'd rather do that.
I'm good with that.
Okay.
Vice coming up with something on the fly, make sure that this is well thought out.
Yes, I agree.
Perfect.
You know, look around, see what's happening and.
Super.
Or add an official starting date. Rate of pay and an effective date, so when that will start.
Add an official starting date and stuff, yeah.
Okay.
We will do that.
Okay, thank you, folks. Okay, let's back up, I don't know is proper procedure here would be just to go back up to number six and start off from there?
Has Judy been?
I need to call her.
So she can come back around.
Okay, so how about if we work on another item while we're, let's go in reverse order here then? The number eight item on our agenda. It is 12:32, we will discuss and consider a service agreement with West Central Nebraska Development District to provide to the county Corona virus, state and local fiscal recovery fund administration services.
I requested that this topic be put on the agenda today. Excuse me. A couple weeks ago, Becky had asked us to examine using West Central Nebraska Development District for the reporting entity. They already do the vetting and the backgrounding for the distribution of the local funds that we selected to do. I'm on West Central's Board of Directors, so I had conversation with Amber, and she brought our board president, Ed Dunn, into the conversation, and they feel like it's a great fit for their business to provide this for us. Ed has had hands-on experience with the village of grants reporting, and I believe Amber has already reached out for Becky and is willing to work.
Yes.
And then, together with her, and is actually looking forward to working with you some more, Becky, she has nothing but wonderful things to say about you and the information you provide to their office. And so we asked last week for Tyler to look at the contract that we already hold with them and tweak it to encompass this. So you might want to have Tyler speak to that.
Tyler, anything you wish to add?
Yeah, two things. One, the contract had expired in December, and so we needed a new one anyway. I went ahead and clarified the requirement that they'll provide the reporting service. Instead of an annual contract, I extended that out to five years, which puts us two years, let's see, yeah, two years past the last date by which the funds can be spent, or 60 days after the final report is due, whichever is sooner. So that should take care of us all the way through the reporting period, I hope.
Becky, does this work well with what you need to get accomplished?
Yes, like I said, I'm more than willing to work with Amber or whoever does it at West Central, I mean, we've worked together in all this so far, but I just think somebody that's maybe more experienced with that system will be, if I get involved in elections, then they'll have the time to do it.
Okay, great. Appreciate your work on that, Tyler. Thank you for the effort that you've put into that already, Becky, as far as keeping track of those funds. Colleagues, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that we enter a service agreement contract with West Central Nebraska Development District to provide the county Corona virus and local fiscal recovery fund administration services. Is there a resolution that we need for that?
Oh, it's the contract.
Just the contract? Okay.
I gave it to Joe, I don't know.
I'll have the chairman sign.
Okay, and authorize the chairman to sign.
I would second.
We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Wulver?
Aye.
Aye.
Brunz?
Aye.
Gibley?
Aye.
Wings?
Aye.
Okay. Becky, Judy be here about when?
She was going to walk, start walking this way, so.
Okay, let's go to the number seven agenda item then. Discuss and consider action on the TIVA, Allergan, CVS, Walgreens, Walmart National Opioid Settlements.
Right, these are out here because I keep getting emails forwarded to me from Kid.
I love to share the misery.
Last year, the county participated in the national settlement with Merck and Janssen, some manufacturers of these opioids. Since then, some additional defendants in those suits have reached what they consider to be national settlements. These are the additional defendants. My understanding from looking through the documentation that the settlement coordinator sent out, it's going to work almost exactly the same way as the last settlement that we signed up, or chose to do that. I did not find in the documents they provided thus far whether or not we can divert the funds to Region Two like we did last time, but in looking at what they do have, it's for basically the exact same uses. The payments are going to come in annually for a number of years, and if we don't want to be in the game of administering these funds and reporting them, which I'm pretty sure Becky doesn't want to be, I think we should probably, we have to opt into the settlement. Where we go with the money after that, we'll have some time to decide. But we do have until the end of April. Either opt in or not opt into this.
And the option appears to be that we should join in in this initiative?
Much like the last settlement, the more sub-units of the state that join into this, the more money becomes available. Really what the board needs to consider, and probably take some action on today, is just deciding whether or not we want to opt into those settlements, and then authorizing us to move forward and do even that.
Colleagues, what do you think? Ready?
Yes, sir. Chairman, I would move to accept the additional funds, and then enter agreement to process those for the companies involved, TIVA, Allergan, CVS, Walgreens, regarding the Walmart National Opioid Settlement.
Here, we have a motion.
Second.
And a second, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Wings?
Aye.
Brunz?
Aye.
Gibley?
Aye.
Wulver?
Aye.
Aye. Sounds great. There is signature needed, is that correct?
On this, it would be a D sign, a doctor's sign. I will probably just email that to you, once I track it down.
Okay, sounds great. And if need be, we can sign it next month, if that.
I think it's going to be totally digital, so.
Okay, two.
Is there part two to that?
Are they already?
No.
Second part is discussing, consider reporting requirements for the National Opioid Settlement Agreement.
So, now that we've gotten, in theory, now that we've gotten some money for our opioid settlement, the reporting period starts to kick in, with first report being due by the end of March. This is something that we had not covered, and so I suspect we probably have that conversation about it. This is something that we had not covered, and so I suspect we should probably have that conversation about it. Because they're gonna want a report. And I suspect we're gonna have to work with somebody from region two to account for those funding, for those funds. So that's why it's on the agenda, so we can start that conversation.
Do we have an action we need to take on this?
No, not necessarily. We probably, we have a forward member on the region two board, don't we?
That would be Commissioner Hubley.
I'm sorry.
You just got, you just got volunteered to work with region two to put this report together.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I'll speak with you later about that.
You'll get back to us how soon?
Soon as our next meeting, is that soon enough?
Yeah, that'll be fine, thank you.
It's due March 31st, so.
Okay. You've got a month, you have a month.
I better get it done this week.
So the obvious question is, did region two do the report last time?
I was the first one.
Oh, this is the first one?
This is the first notice I've got to report being due on that.
Well, I did on this national settlement opioid thing because the funds are going to them rather than round here like we talked about. Thank you.
Yeah, and that's the second, that's another judgment that was subsequent to the primary one that we granted to.
If it all shakes out the same, region two is going to get more money to combat opioids.
Thank you.
Okay, so talk to Deputy County Attorney Board. Okay, so you got your marching orders on that, Commissioner Hubley?
Thank you.
Okay, great. And when is the deadline?
March 31st, I understand.
Great shape, okay. Okay, we're back to agenda item number six. Discuss and consider planning applications submitted by Betty Remus for Remus Administrative Subdivision on property located at 32868 South Branting Road in an A1 agricultural district and described as part of the northeast quarter of Section 15, Township 10 North, range 30 west of the 6 p.m. Lincoln County, Nebraska.
Judy Clark, Planning Administrator, Lincoln County, this should be the easiest agenda item of the day.
That's why we wanted to have it be the last one.
Okay, very good.
Let's hope.
Judy being so flexible with this.
Judy, thank you for
No problem.
being able to work with us on this. I really appreciate your flexibility.
No problem.
Okay, tell us what we got going on here.
Okay, you should have all received a copy of the subdivision, the preliminary and final. And then there's one that kind of shows the current building that is on site. This is just a simple subdivision. They're wanting to take the current agricultural dwelling off from the rest of the agricultural, neighboring agricultural property. Three acre lot, so it does meet all subdivision and zoning regulations in conformance with the comp plan, so.
Is it changing ownership?
Um, not right now, no.
They're just cleaning it up in case they ever want to change.
Cleaning it up in case they ever want to change ownership, yes.
And no objections?
None whatsoever.
I see that there's three acres and minus 0.22 county road, that's.
Yep, so that.
That still qualifies as three acres?
Yeah, because their property line goes to the middle of the county road, basically. So that is their property, so that meets the three acre requirement.
Okay. Colleagues?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the planning applications submitted by Betty Remus for Remus Administrative Subdivision on property located at 32868 South Branting Road in an A1 agricultural district and described as part of the northeast quarter of Section 15, Township 10 North, range 30 west of the 6 p.m. Lincoln County, Nebraska.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Bruns.
Aye.
Wings.
Aye.
Hubley.
Aye.
Wulver.
Aye. Thank you, Judy.
No problem, thank you.
Anything that we need to sign on?
Got it signed already?
Okay, great, thank you.
I was trying to catch this up, I have to sign it for you.
Okay. Next item on our agenda. Is there need for a closed session?
Lord, no.
Glad to hear that. Okay.
We did this corrupt today, that's good.
Okay. Here are concerns from elected officials, department heads, or the representatives.
Hi.
Hi there, and your name might be?
Jerome Kramer, Sheriff.
Sir.
I kind of got a lot of this sorted out in my head over the weekend, but just to catch you guys up to speed. We're looking at a pretty major event with the seizure of a bunch of cattle. And the way that normally works is we would gather those cattle up and we would feed them off-site where the, they had been and have to buy the feed and hire somebody to feed them and and transport them in probably within 10 days to the sale barn. And of course, what we run into is the availability of feed, how much do you buy? We're talking, and we don't know how many cattle, we're talking excess of 300, but.
In excess of how many?
Excess of 300, but probably less than 500.
Okay.
So. I made the decision to get ahold of the sale barn this morning because that's where they end up going anyway. My concern, another one of my concerns to begin with was not have to transport them now because of the condition. I don't want them down on cattle pots and not be able to get them off. But then I thought, you know, how much better are they gonna be in 10 days? Probably not much. So I got ahold of Jay with the sale barn this morning and we'll just go ahead and take them all in there. They'll feed them for the week, for 10 days, or whatever it is. That way they know an exact feed, what the cost is when they're done. And that'll just be, the county will be billed, but it'll be paid out of, out of the sale of the cattle. Along with the trucking and other expenses, we'll just put in a bill there. The, the problem I was initially gonna address the board with was how the heck are we gonna pay for this? Because I don't have a line item for cattle feed. But with it, if we do it this way, we can keep it out of the county budget, we can keep it out of my budget. And, and we can just have it taken out of the sale of the cattle, which ultimately it would do anyway. But of course, as you know, that wouldn't go back in my budget if I spent 25,000 on care and transport cattle. So just to let you know, that's what's going on. We'll be up there probably Thursday. It's gonna be probably a two-day deal because we got the vet out. Arnold is coming to do a body score.
Body condition score?
Yeah, he wants hands-on 100 head so he can compare a score to age of cows. And we got a ton of pictures already, did some aircraft work and we haven't been on the property, but just viewed it from the roads and we'll be getting a search warrant made up and get on the property, so.
So what can you tell us about this particular incident? I can tell you later. I know where it's, I know who they're talking about, who he's talking about.
Well, this has been an issue for a lot of years, but it's, it's always been an issue where it was out of sight, out of mind, nobody had it, we didn't have a complaintant. But he's kind of started doing business in a different part of the county, counties. And has decided to start using the neighbor's pastures. And there's enough people that have just gotten tired of it that they're coming forward and giving us what we needed for, to move forward and you know.
So without, without saying any names, any, I don't really even care. Talk to me about when you said the, the payment will come out of the sale of the cattle. Do the cattle then become the property of the county?
Once we seize them, they will be.
Thank you, answers my question. Don't need any more quick answers, thank you.
And they are being seized because of care or lack thereof?
Yeah, it'll be an animal abuse case.
Do you anticipate difficult situation?
The younger of the young man can have a little hothead, but.
Probably isn't the first time you encountered that situation.
No, and he has, he's already facing felony charges in another county, so for the same thing, but just not this many counts. I think he had maybe six counts there, I'm not sure. Animal abuse, and we're gonna be looking at over hundreds here, so. It only takes one one conviction to they're looking at a probability of five to 15 years out of the cattle business, so.
Okay, well, thanks for bringing us up.
Which is good news if you're a cow.
Yep.
Good news for the industry.
Thank you for bringing us up to date on that and we'll have some nicer weather, it looks like, here for a little while, so maybe that will help out in the chore that is ahead of you.
Well, as you know, the feed thing is just the beginning and then, of course, have 100, your hands-on 100 head at 15 bucks a head, that's gonna, that all adds up, so.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
Don't know how many trucks to get because I don't know how many cattle there are, but we're getting it narrowed down.
Okay. Sounds good. Keep us informed.
We have changing topics, just curious, the federal inmates?
Oh, yeah.
Where are we at on that?
We had a conversation with US Marshal on Friday. And I think the number he was talking about was much lower than what we had hoped for because we'd asked for 55, and we thought we would probably hit that number because we were willing to take all their females that they wanted to bring, but they had a different thought. We're looking at maybe 15 from the Omaha direction. But he's also gave us the contact for Cheyenne and South Dakota, we're that in South Dakota, maybe Rapid City. So we might be able to pick up some there. Of course, the transportation, we've got the, we've got the means to get them now and, and they pay us mileage for the help, so.
Deep leader.
So hopefully we can get some beds filled. This has been kind of a hit with the governor's decision to take them home. I assume, and that's just my assumption, that those inmates will be available again because this was nothing but a political tool, but.
That was kind of my conclusion too, if you can't handle it before, how long can you sustain this?
Looks good on paper.
Well, yeah. Anyway.
Okay, Sheriff.
Yep.
What is your, what is your occupancy right now across the street?
I don't honestly know.
Fairly full?
Probably not with those guys gone.
Oh, have they left?
Oh, they left, they invited us on Wednesday and they were gone on Friday, two weeks ago. Week and a half. So, yeah, it wasn't much of a heads up. And I thought maybe he might have been selected where they pulled him from, but they even took him from his home county, so.
Okay, thank you, Sheriff.
Yep.
Sorry about that.
Okay, we're gonna keep this meeting open as we finish signing claims. Commissioner Wulver is excused.
Thank you. Are you available again this week to sit down? Lee Davies and Mark and me?
Certainly tomorrow. Yeah, if you can make something happen tomorrow.
I'll, I'll make a phone call and let you know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Or even today, I guess, that's a little short notice.
I could do it today too.
Day's about over, but.
As soon as I'm in this appointment.
No, tomorrow's fine, seriously, because.
I'll, I'll just call Lee while I'm driving.
Okay, whatever.
If I make today work, I don't want to have to come back to town tomorrow either.
Sure. Fire off, fire me a check, please. I looked over the initial. Jamie, you will contact.
Actually, I'm gonna ask you to do that, because I think you need to publicly contact your new director of the OPIO. I think that's how you get it, it's wrote.
Personnel committee member. Tell me, sit down and talk over the hangman stuff. I'm gonna be occupied for the first 30 minutes tomorrow morning at across the street over there.
Well, then you're at nine. At nine, we're out, a week almost. Remember you wanted to, you wanted to visit with about our Purgos thing? And you asked me to set something up. You were gone out of town when I set it up, so. Oh, but we can push that back.
How about after you're done with, out it?
Because Todd's, I'm sure Todd's flexible.
I've got some things going on in the morning, so.
You said something, because I couldn't remember if I sent you an email or not. I tried to send you an email and it didn't come, it came back to me.
Yeah, it's, yeah. I just had a senior moment and I forgot. It was kind of a large.
I forgot too.
It was kind of a large evening the night before when we talked. I was working very hard, late at night.
I bet you were.
I've got 20 hours of continuing education.
If it doesn't, I mean, we can, we can reschedule what they give you time, but I just, I told him that you and I both agreed that we should talk to you first. Does that still make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. I just told him, I just told him we'd stop out there.
Getting up with you probably takes a person, so we could put that off, so are you available or not at 8:30?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can, I can push it back, to 10 or whatever you want to do. Or we can do it next week, or whatever.
Let's do it next week.
8:30?
8:30, you remind me here?
Okay.
Are you going to planning and building this week?
I think I'm gonna have to vow it out for a personal contract.
Okay, so what do you, what do you think about meeting with Todd Monday after the meeting? This meeting, is that worse? Let's do that, because that week's gonna get pretty tight. Is that okay? All right, I'll call him.
Disregard.
And we'll we'll catch up with him next Monday. And if it's more convenient, we could just have him come down, let him sit right here and visit.
Tomorrow, 8:30. If you could email that, that'd be great.
I'll call him before I leave the buildings, I don't want to forget. Well, so I think you just brought it up. I have the worst time with emails system. Got like, it makes me redo the password every 90 days. So my MacBook, I think I have it kind of mastered on that, but the phone, it's, it's a catch 22, it'll say, do you wish to re- update your password, yes. But it won't pull the password over from the MacBook, even though it's an iPhone. And I'm not smart enough to get it done. And even our IT guy, Dave, doesn't like iPhones. So he's not real keen on, or not real versed on them, and so he's helped me a few times, but each time, it seems like either one or the other does not want to re-establish a new password. So right now, I can't get emails on my phone, but I can get them on my computer. The main door?
Oh, yeah, the Carter, you're on the outside, yeah.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Maybe it just doesn't like the cut of your jib.
That might be.
It's never, it's never failed to let me in. How about you, Jerry?
When's the last time you had to use it?
I don't know. Couple, couple, three weekends ago, I don't know.
Well, here is the last one of these. All of these, it's been a big, big day, but a pretty important day. Yep.
Yeah.
Continually pleased with how we dissect tissues, put them back together, dissect them again. And I think Paul and Hall, who are presidents of this county, should be, if they're not aware of the fact that we try to get to the best answer, they should be aware of that. May not always agree at all times, but... Really, we don't? I need one signature. Come together and get good things done.
We're not always gonna agree.
I'm telling you, Becky, I've got you a long time here. Sorry. If you're agreeing on absolutely everything, there's a problem. There's something wrong there. Becky, what else do you have for us?
I don't think I have anything else.
I'm not sure I have those three phone numbers, could you?
That's it for claims, right?
I can read this special message from the...
Yeah, well, I got it, I haven't looked at it yet.
Is it proper to make this one call right here?
Yep. Do you want to adjourn?
Let's see, we're done with claims and we are...